Good afternoon. We are here for the purpose of a workshop today, April 6th, 1:00 P. M. The first item, welcome everyone, and I hope you're all well, and the same with your families. The first item on the agenda is the discussion regarding the Dupree Bruno contract agreement. The contract, as you have seen in your backup material, is essentially completed with the exception of the discussion of salary. So there has been some input from staff and from the general public regarding the salary. And so I would like for the board to weigh in on that after having the opportunity to review the information that was provided for us, like the board's salary analysis. I believe that, I believe that Dr. Pruitt and Brian Williams are available to answer questions if you have any. So at this time, I will open it up for comment. Dr. Atkins, would you have anything to say at this point?
Just to verify what you indicated, they are available at the LCPEC presenter. So any staff member, part of the chief team could be available for questions.
Thank you. Okay, board members, questions, comments?
Madam Chair, can I say one thing, not related to the board? This is just for, for public knowledge, because I know on Zoom, which is where the platform that we are doing this on, that it normally has a chat mechanism. I just wanted to make sure that the public is aware, and the board is also aware, that mechanism has been turned off to make sure, because obviously we have sunshine requirements. So the individual chat mechanism has been turned off for that. So I just want to make sure that the public is aware of that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Quick. Did you have any further comments regarding the attorney contract?
Just to say that the contract, which we worked on with staff and with, with the chair, as well as negotiated with Mr. Pruitt Bruno, reflects what was agreed upon between the chair and Mr. Pruitt Bruno, with the exception, as she stated, that there is still the pending issue as it relates to salary. And she has made at least an initial salary request and, but we need to, for the board, we need to get clear direction as to what the board is, is or is not willing to, to pay.
Thank you, Mr. Quick. Okay, then at this time, I will open it up to board members for comments or questions.
I have significant concerns about discussing actual dollar amounts publicly. I think that you've done a fantastic job negotiating up to this point. I'd like to suggest that we turn the salary negotiation piece over to Attorney Quick at this point. I spoke with Attorney Quick this morning, and he is in agreement that it's not necessarily in the best interest of the school district for us to be throwing numbers out in a public forum. The ultimate bottom line contract amount is going to be published. However, if we could, like the way it's set up right now, I don't, I don't have confidence that Attorney Bruno is, is getting my feedback because I can't contact you because that would violate sunshine. However, Attorney Quick can bring those messages to Attorney Bruno and negotiate from the perspective of all seven board members. Am I making sense?
Yes, I did not feel comfortable proceeding any further without the input of board members. So I was advised that we could do this in workshop. However, I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
If I may just add that I also spoke with Attorney Quick this morning about how quickly we could turn this around. And we can call a special meeting for the specific purpose of, of approving this contract. And Attorney Quick indicated that he has the ability right now to turn this around in three days. So we're not looking at pushing this up for a long period of time. I just think we're avoiding a public discussion about an item. I don't know how to say it other than I believe that throwing numbers out is sort of in bad taste.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And just to follow up on what Ms. Patrica said, depending on how quickly we get this taken care of, I mean, I would need to, if we were to, if we go that route, I would need to get directives from each of the board members to have an understanding, and I could have an individual conversation offline with each of you if we were to go that route as to what your top dollar is so that I could then negotiate to bring back an amount that would be acceptable to at least a majority of the board. If I get, if I can get it done between now and the next board meeting, which is tomorrow, we could conceivably have this on as good cause. If, as Ms. Patrica indicated, if we're not able to, we can call a special board meeting. Your policies require two business days notice for a, for a special board meeting.
Great. Thank you so much. Ms. Gittens. Ms. Gittens, unmute yourself. Ms. Gittens, please unmute yourself.
Yes, ma'am, I did. I thought it was all muted together initially. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I was doing fine. Um, I, I'm kind of on the fence about that because it's going to be public record anyway as to the salary. All of the salaries are. If they're not, you know, it's a public record request if you want it. So I, I'm just concerned of taking any more time, even three more days with all that's going on in the district right now. I would, a couple of the things that I wanted to mention are not necessarily saying this salary or that salary, but they're, I guess, kind of generic, if I may go ahead with that.
Yes, please.
One of the concerns I have is the question as to the general counsel, the title. And a general counsel is a chief counsel or a chief legal officer of a legal department. The school board attorney position has always been general, general counsel with the district. And the staff attorney was like a chief or something of that sort. And we as a board, I think we have to decide what is our position on what the board attorney is going to do, and whether that's going to be a subordinate position to the chief legal counsel that is the staff attorney. And if you recall several months ago, when all of this started with the change in the staff attorney's position, I brought this up before, and I was told, no, this is just a general thing that, that happens. It, it has created an issue now because it does, at least on paper with titles, sound like we're saying that the chief legal counsel is over everyone that is legal in the district. And the board attorney and the superintendent report to us as a board, and the staff attorney reports to the superintendent. So I'm just a little confused about that relationship and what everybody feels it's supposed to be. Many of the positions on that workshop, in the workshop, the backup materials, don't show an assistant attorney or staff attorney positions as general counsel. So it's kind of difficult to compare other school districts because they call it deputy or some other type of title. And the comparison that we received regarding the public sector, general councils, that's still different. However, their salaries are commensurate to what Attorney Bruno was asking. The, and I did, I got some other numbers when we received a paper that talked about the different percentiles and the medians. And if you go on to it, I'll share this with you via email. But there are three places, the PESA, Salary.com, and Glass Door. And the median for this position is, even in the 25th percentile, is 185 to 180 to 185. And I can share that with you. The other thing is that when Mr. Dotick was hired, Dr. Pruitt specifically said that he would be considered entry level. And at entry level in 2018, he was hired at 175. And that was two years ago. The other, yeah, there's a few other things, and I can, you know, send this to you all. But if you also look at the contract, it's my understanding that Attorney Bruno also added some duties because she felt that they were necessary and they weren't on the contract. So it's not a matter of trying to do less. She's actually put down that she is willing to do more to make sure the job gets done. I just think we need to look at the positioning of the position and who reports to whom on the, on the chart. There is not a, another attorney that is over the board attorney. And so we have to keep all of that in mind. I will send all of this information. If it's the board's decision to the majority to do this offline, that's fine. But I believe the public should be aware of all of the reasons why. I don't think that it's really out of sorts to proceed with the salary opposed to the salary that she requested.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to bring two things to your attention as a board, and that is our district organizational chart clearly shows the board attorney on the same line as the superintendent. And the other thing is that I think with some of those NationalSalary.com, et cetera, Glass Door, you may be looking at some private sector salaries, which are typically higher than the public sector. So those are the only two things that entered into some of my discussion and, and doing research as we negotiated the contract. So I just wanted to bring that up, but thank you for your input. Mr. Quick, do you have anything at this point?
No, nothing at this point. I mean, I'd like to hear, you know, get directive from the board as to whether they want to proceed today or if they would prefer that, like you said, to provide me, I guess, with a, a top line number that I could, could then negotiate and come back, either one of those.
Okay, thank you. Then let me, Mary, are you, are you not seeing? It looks like there's two hands raised. Do you not see those on your screen?
I do not.
Okay, I have under participants list, Melissa and I both have had our hands raised. I'm sorry, but I can only see your face. Like, so if you put your hand up closer to your face, I would be able to. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
I thought, I thought the little hand raised thing was, was working for all of us.
Okay, I did not, okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Vaughn. Please go ahead and proceed.
Okay, what I was going to say is because this is public record, and as we were first discussing board candidates, we certainly didn't have any problem with dragging some personal things out into the public. I, I think that it's only fair that we talk publicly on what we think. And I want to just simplify the whole thing. We can look and we can compare this one and that one. But the best comparison is our last full-time board attorney, which was Rob Dotick two years ago, and he was noted as entry level because, as some of the board members have actually said, being a staff attorney is slightly different from being a board attorney. And he was given 175,000 when I, as the base salary. When I talked to Mr. Quick a few days ago, as he was getting a feeling for how all of us felt, I felt that 175, it's slightly below another figure, but I think 175 is a very fair, equitable starting salary for Ms. Bruno. And, you know, to me, it's, it's a no-brainer. Why are we going crazy looking at Kalamazoo and what they pay when we have something that we did right here in, in Lee County? So that's my comment.
Thank you. And I think that what Mr. Quick has requested is that we decide whether we want to continue this conversation publicly or we want to give our input to him privately. So can we then poll the rest of the board regarding that? Let me start with Ms. Morgan. I can't hear you, Ms. Morgan. Can you unmute?
I prefer to speak with Mr. Quick.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica, I think we know you prefer to speak with Mr. Quick. Ms. Juvenelli?
Well, I just, I do have a couple of things. My, my problem is the information that we're giving, that given is outdated. 2018 is outdated. So if we need to just stick with like market rates and what that is, I sent you recently this, the county attorney, and I sent it to everyone just like 15 minutes ago, what the county attorney makes. He makes $200,000. That's in a news press article that I just sent to you, to everybody. I don't have a problem proceeding. I think that we're getting, we're muddying the waters by getting information that's 2018. So I, I think that we give Mr. Quick our information and let's vote on this tomorrow night, or tomorrow, tomorrow at 1:00. I'm sorry.
Your information.
Yes, and Mr. Quick is aware of how I feel. So I mean, I'm not, Mr. Quick has the same information. So that's where I stand.
Thank you. Then Ms. Jordan.
Okay, I have spoken to Mr. Quick regarding my feelings on this. And I have spoken to some of the board members over in Rovar County, as well as Oak County. And when I'm looking at new hires, and these are new hires, and they're, they have the same student population. One is a little bit higher than us, and one is a little bit lower than us, and they are general counsel. And that means they are responsible for the entire district. With us, with Mr. Williams coming in and now obtaining other staff attorneys, that has taken away a lot of the work that Mr. Dotick was doing at the time that he was here. Because he was doing multiple things, not just dealing with the board members, he was dealing with district issues as well. So when I see that we had an offer out there, and then the attorney has put quite a bit more than what our offer was, and then I look at the $84,000 extras, that's just in retirement and covering a vacation and all of that. When you add all that up, it becomes much more than that figure that we're speaking about.
Yes, and that's where I requested a total, a total package, including that, so that people would be aware of what.
And that's what we have to look at, the total package, not just what this one lump sum is. Because all that extra, those dollars are in there, they would not be in there. That's not, you would not be receiving that. So to me, I think that, we'll go back, I will ask Minister Quick to renegotiate this. And I think we do have to take into consideration that it is a board attorney and not a general counsel, which this person is not taking care of the entire district. And another thing that I guess really, I guess caught my eye was the fact that I don't believe that we should be paying for anything dealing with social engagements or community gigs or whatever. I, I just, I think that if it's pertaining to the school district, that's one thing. But associations that are not pertaining to that, I don't believe that we should be compensating, paying dues for that, nor should we be paying for their trips for these organizations. And the pro bono as well. How do you, how does that work with the pro bono part? Where they are taking on cases, but also 100% with us.
And I think Mr. Quick could probably address that better than I, but when I did my research, I understand that in order to be a member of the Florida Bar, there are certain numbers of pro bono hours and those types of activities required, you know, for ongoing membership. So, okay, so.
But I did, that in the other attorney's contracts.
Okay, again, I'll, I'll ask Mr. Quick to address that part. But so are you going to give, or you have already given Mr. Quick your input?
Yes, ma'am, I have given him feed, feedback, and I'll be more than happy to give him more.
Thank you very much. Okay, so then, Mr. Quick?
Yeah, I just wanted to, Mary, to follow up what you were talking about. I think what you were referring to were the CLE's continuing legal education, which you're required to do 30 hours in a three-year cycle. The Florida Bar strongly recommends, but doesn't require pro bono work. There are, there are ways to either donate financially, donate your time, or, yes, there are people who, who don't do pro bono work. So it's something that is strongly suggested by the Florida Bar, but it's not something that's absolutely required.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vaughn? Please unmute yourself.
I was just realizing that.
Okay.
Oops. Listening to Ms. Jordan made me, made me believe that this is a conversation that we need to have all of us together. Because even though, you know, we tell Mr. Quick our feelings, and he's excellent coming back and, and sharing those in a general way, you know, there, there are things, for instance, regarding the pro bono, I don't understand why that would be a problem for anyone. This is just, it's like civil duty. It's like duty is a good citizen if you're an attorney. I just got muted by the host. Oh, there we go. I, I don't see that as a problem. Second, I'm going to go back to what I said before. When compare apples to apples, going to another school district that has another kind of system, you know, that's, it's, it's totally different. And I think that if Mr. Dotick was making the salary he did a couple of years ago, I believe that at least that salary is something that we should have for our, for our board attorney. And to add to that, yes, we've hired a couple additional attorneys on the staff side. But that was because Mr. Williams was overworked and couldn't do things the way he wanted to in a timely manner, and those people are on that side. And if you look at their job descriptions, they're doing very different things from the things that Ms. Dupree Bruno is going to be doing for us. So I don't know why, you know, we have clicked on yes, 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 on so many administrative positions. And now we're haggling over a small amount for a professional who's been in this profession, her, her attorney profession for over 20 years. And, and it's like we're nickel and diming, and. And I'm going to stick with the amount that I recommended, a minimum of one seventy-five, which is exactly what was paid two years ago to Mr. Dotick.
Thank you. Board members, any other, Ms. Giovinelli, did you ever hand up? No, okay. Mrs. Jordan?
Okay, this is not a debate, but what we're saying that Mr. Dotick had made, one seventy-five. What was, he was already in the district. So what was he making before he moved into that position? So that would be, you know, something that you have to look at as well.
Yes, thank you, because members of the district accrue annual raises, et cetera, as any other administrative personnel. Okay, I think it was then Ms. Gittens, then Ms. Giovinelli.
Well, in answer, thank you, in answer to that question, Ms. Jordan, he was making one nineteen as the staff attorney. But I have a couple of other things. One, I do not think in the position that we have as board attorney, that that board attorney position should be less than the staff attorney. Two, in answer to your question about that Mr. Dotick, that some of the things that he did were taken over. I would say compare Mr. Dotick's position to Wyshroda at this point, and what Mr. Quick and that attorney firm has done. And you can look at their statements every month to show all that they do, that it is significant, a significant amount. So that comparison, I don't think is, is fair. And also, Dr. Pruitt had given us a comparison chart, and there were three salaries on there and with the benefits. And I can't find it right now, but it had the three, with the compensation, the salary and everything at the bottom. And when you look at those three, and I'll find it and share it with you. But it was not a significant amount of money between the lowest and the highest. I mean, there were, you know, a few thousand dollars, so if you get a chance to look at that. Also.
Excuse me, for everybody's information, that's April first, Communication, page two.
April first, from Dr. Pruitt.
From Dr. Pruitt.
And it was page two, so if you look at that, you will see the comparisons, and I'll put it up in a second. The only, well, it's not that much of a difference, I feel, between what Mr. Dotick was making in two thousand and eighteen, prior to the market raises going into effect with the district. And let's see, the retirement investment account was in Mr. Dotick's five percent for Ms. Bruno, ten percent in the superintendent's contract, retirement and all of that. I, I just, I, I just think we need to look at all of the work that Wyshroda has done, Shiroda has done in these past months, and put that on one person. And of course, that one person is able to get outside help. But, and, and the other thing is, like I said, in that, what we presented to her, she even added some things because she felt that they were necessary. So I, I don't think that the board attorney at this point is going to be doing any, any small amount of work. And it, looking back at, forgetting, you know, twenty years of experience in the legal field as well. So as far as going forward with it, I, I just, I feel we've gone around and around and around. And I feel we have made, we made a decision, and every time we make a decision, there's always some question from staff or someone saying, well, what about this? We are hiring a person to work for the board, and we should make that decision.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Giovinelli. Ms. Giovinelli, please unmute yourself.
Is that?
Now, can you start over, please?
Yeah, it actually says, okay. I had actually requested Mr. Dotick's prior salary, and somebody mentioned that. So thank you, because that was, that was really important to note the difference. Our, the hiring that we do is actually just two people, and possibly an auditor, but is a superintendent and our board attorney. So I think that it is up to us to make sure that we are taking care of the two employees that we have. And, and that being competitive with other positions, even in our local county. And, and market value, market rate, whatever anybody wants to call it, is what we need to be thinking about our employees and sustainability, and making sure that quality of life is the best thing. And I, I don't see a problem with this salary that she's even requested, because that is, this is two thousand and twenty, and we may actually having to do a hiring freeze right now. So I think we need to be wise about what we're doing, but yet we need to be thinking of our employee that we're about to hire, that I think is going to do a great job, and I'm very confident in that. So, and I think that she is going to be very busy. We have a lot of policies that need to be looked at that are not in line with our laws. So I am ready to move forward with getting our board attorney hired. Thank you.
Thank you, okay.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Yeah, this is John, just, I wanted to point out one thing while you guys are discussing, because there's, there is an error in the breakdown of the total cost. It has in a purchase of sick timeline. There is not a buyback of sick days built into the negotiated contract. There is a buyback of vacation days. And there is an ability to convert some sick days into vacation days, but that would not, that would not increase the number of days that could be bought back under the contract. So I just want to make sure that when you all are analyzing it, that that line, purchase of sick time, is not necessary for budgeting purposes.
Okay, thank you, that's important information. Okay. So then, it, it seems as though we have proceeded with this conversation. So, hold on, yes, Ms. Debbie Jordan, please unmute yourself.
I'm sorry, I have a question, everybody. Do, what do you, do you all believe that we should be paying for civic associations as well? That's in this contract? Travel, their dues? I looked at all the other contracts, and as I said, I spoke to these people. And it's not in anybody's contracts that I've seen, or that I have found in multiple counties. And why would we, why would we do that? That's an individual person's cause, or I, I just, that has nothing to do with the district.
Okay, are you talking about section four B?
There's a, there is a section in there.
Volunteer activities?
Volunteer activity, civic association that, I'm sorry, I have so many papers here from notes, that stated that she is able to, that we will allow her to, of course, we don't, we cannot tell people what organization they can or cannot be along to, but that's on them. But we should not be paying dues for any type of organization that's a civic organization that has nothing to do with the American Bar, or the Florida Bar, or the Lee County Bar Association.
Okay, so can you show me where it says we're going to pay for that? Because I didn't see that.
Well, it says, it says, also would have to approve that. And I just, to me, and I know I shared this with Mr. Quick, because I asked him about that, as I did the other board members in Florida. And I'm sorry that I can't.
So is it number eight in the contract, then?
Yes, it's, it's number eight on page four.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Quick, do you have a? Okay.
I'm sorry, there were two people talking, what did, what did?
Okay, give an interpretation of number eight for us.
Yeah, number eight states, what it's, what it says is that you guys were paid for her bar dues, which is standard for an attorney, an in-house attorney. U.S. District Court, Middle District, that's for if there's any sort of, she's making appearance in the federal court out in Lee County, as well as the Lee County Bar Association. The provision that Ms. Jordan is talking about is that it states that the board, as part of her compensation, will also pay for one local service or local civic organization as approved by the school board chair. So that would be some sort of organization, in addition to that, which would need to be, I guess, submitted to the chair and approved by the chair for purposes of compensation. But there is a provision that that was negotiated that's in there that relates to that, yes.
Thank you, okay. Ms. Gittens?
Yes, in regards to the memberships. Memberships in state and national associations for the board attorney is the same language as in Mr. Dotick's contract, paragraph six. It's also the same in Brevard and Polk County. Membership in local, in one local service or civic organization is in the superintendent's contract, paragraph five. It's also in Polk and Brevard's. Travel associated as permitted by statute. Just as we have to get, by the statute, get permission, and it has to go before the board to travel, that statute is still in place. So it's not a blanket that the attorney can go wherever. Application and testing fees and maintenance was in Mr. Dotick's contract, paragraph six. So paragraph six and I think five in Mr. Dotick's contract pretty much answer those questions.
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Giovinelli.
And I believe we pay for Dr. Atkins to do the rotary. Would that be, would be the, the type of thing that the one additional service, local, right? And that's my understanding. So I'm thinking that it would be something to that, that we would be paid for. And I think it would have to be approved, so, and that answered that, Mr. Quick answered that. So I think, I think it's okay.
You don't, you don't pay for rotary?
Oh, you don't?
No.
Okay.
I pay for my rotary.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Ms. Morgan?
Yes, Madam Chair, we started, you were essentially polling the board about whether we wanted to have this conversation with the board attorney or as a group. Some of us are not participating, assuming that, with the reference that it be conducted with Mr. Quick, they're going ahead and having that conversation. I'd like clarification, because if we are going to have a discussion here, and we're not going to refer it to Mr. Quick, then I will come in and, and make comments.
Okay, so we had, Ms. Jordan, I just want to ask you one more time. You wanted to communicate with Mr. Quick, right? Correct. Okay, so we had four who wanted to have a conversation, and three who wanted to communicate with Mr. Quick. So I think we're communicating, so if you would, please go ahead, we would appreciate that.
Are you talking to me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, then a couple of things. First of all, let's see, with respect to Dotick, I think there are a couple of things that need to be taken into consideration. One is that, as, as someone has already said, the office has changed considerably in the period of time since he was hired. With respect to the comparison with Williams, Mr. Williams has supervisory responsibility, and also the responsibility for overseeing the delegation of specific matters to attorneys who are handled on a contractor consulting basis. I believe that we should go with the salary that was, was recommended by the Director of HR, and let's see, six hundred, one hundred and sixty thousand. And here's my, bottom line, my reasoning is this. We, as a board, have worked for four years to try to raise salaries in this district so that people, especially at the lower levels, were paid a living wage. We have agreed to work, to focus on the employees at the lowest levels, trying to bring them up, and we have done that consistently over the last four years. This has been done with the consent of leadership who have recognized the importance of raising those salaries and have stood back and taken less than, considerably less than, their share of the market rate relative to teachers and other employees. And so for me, it would be breaking faith with all of those people who have said, I understand that I'm not being paid the market rate. Well, first of all, I understand two things. One, I'm in public education, that's a public service. That is, that is a public market rate, not a private market rate. I am working in the public sector, and I am willing to take whatever percentage, recognizing that the board, over time, is going to raise salaries. So I am not going to put, I can't support putting Ms. Bruno ahead of everybody else in the organization. It is not a trivial amount. I often hear board members quibble over small amounts of money in contracts or in, in other conversations. To me, the issue is not the amount of money. To me, the issue is the principle, that we pay a public sector market rate. The public sector market rate for this job is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We don't pay the private sector rate, and we don't pay employees to do what they think they should be doing. They work for us, they do the job we want them to do, and we shouldn't be increasing their salary just because they think there's more to the job when they've never even sat in the seat. Let me just see if there are other comments I want to make. Oh, yes, so I recognize that some of you and some people in the community believe that I approach decisions on personnel with prejudice. And, and I will simply say that I have sat on this board for almost eight years. I have made a number of decisions with respect to appointments and salaries. I believe that those decisions are respected and trusted because they recognize that I respect the equity in employment for all employees. And I don't believe that individual employees should be singled out. And one final word. If you want to talk about who gets penalized by moving from the private sector to the public sector, talk to the people in IT.
Thank you very much. I just want to call your attention once again to our district organizational chart, which has the public at the top, the board attorney, the school board, and board advisory committees at the second tier, followed by the superintendent, the chief of staff, et cetera. Then down, one, two, three, four, are the chiefs. So I have a question then for the superintendent. And what is the average salary of our chiefs? And did they not just, about a year and a half or almost two years ago now, be awarded the market rate salaries?
Just correct, they're, they were awarded the market rate salaries. Our chiefs are making, and again, I'm doing this from the top of my head, but anywhere from a rate of. but anywhere from a rate of in the fifties or sixties up to one seventy.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Gittens and then Ms. Giovinelli?
Question, so I'm going to jump back in.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Morgan. Go ahead, please.
That information was provided by Dr. Angela Pruitt to you all today.
Okay.
My understanding previously that the chief's basic salary was one seventy, and I've seen that in a couple of places after the market raises were given in, what, December of of eighteen, that their, the chief's average rate was one seventy. The the issue is there, and like Ms. Fisher was giving the breakdown of where the staff is on the chart. Again, I will continue to repeat that the superintendent and the attorney are our employees and is not, they work for the board, for all seven of us, therefore for the whole community. Their job is significant. It should not be compared to the staff attorney's position, no matter how many people are working under the staff attorney. It is our employee. It is our decision not to be compared because it is not comparable.
Thank you very much. Ms. Giovinelli, then Ms. Patrica.
Mr. Dotick did get a raise, fifty-six thousand dollar raise from general counsel to board attorney. That's a big jump, and there was a reason for it. And second of all, I believe her job description would be supervising employees. So I think that that's still, that is relevant, and it's still less than private sector. So I I don't understand some of the arguments that, and I believe that the one sixty is based on outdated information that was given by the, a human resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Dr. Atkins, do you know what percentile you are paid as compared to superintendents across the state of Florida?
I'll get verification from Dr. Pruitt, but I think amongst districts that are comparable in size and demographic, I want to stick in the twenty-second percentile.
I I thought it was, sticking off the top of my head, is the twenty-second percentile. So if we are going to be comparing our two employees, I think we need to look at where we pay Dr. Atkins as compared to superintendents across the state, and that is at the twenty-ith-ish percentile. I think that comparing the board attorney for the school district of Lee County to the attorney for the county is not an apt comparison. I'm saying this kiddingly, Ms. Giovinelli, would you like to give Dr. Atkins a raise? Because Mr. Dejale makes two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year after that, after that latest increase. I say that kiddingly. I think that what's missing from this conversation is two things. First of all, it is a privilege. It is a privilege to serve the community, this community, Lee County. It is a privilege. That privilege has to be taken into consideration when we're negotiating, and I've not yet heard mention of our role as being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. Fifteen thousand dollars might seem like not a lot of money to people, but given the times that we're in right now and having absolutely no idea what the budget will be coming down from the state next year, I think that paying the initial ask in any negotiation is just a complete abdication of our duties as board members. We are talking, you know, we're talking about Mr. Dotick, and Mr. Dotick had thirteen years of experience in this school district and twenty years of experience in the public sector. We're looking at hiring someone who has no experience in the public sector at all. I was looking for for one of two pieces of information in making this decision. The first was, what does the market demand for Ms. Bruno's services? And getting her last three years of tax returns would would have shown me that. I understand that she does not want to provide those, and and that's fine. I can understand why she would not want to provide those. That being said, the only other piece of information I have to base this decision on is what does the market demand for a board attorney in the state of Florida? And how do we pay her in line with what we're paying our other employee, which is the superintendent? And so that that's where I'm coming from on in terms of, I cannot, I cannot vote yes for anything in the range of what's been suggested up to this point.
Thank you very much. Okay. The hands are not showing, but I see Ms. Vaughn with her hand up, and then Ms. Gittens. Okay. Ms. Vaughn, please, I'm, yeah, I just, I just did. Just just a couple of things, and I'm going to come back to several things that were said by my colleagues on the board. First of all, I I think as somebody said, this is our employee. We have a couple of employees, there are several employees, the auditor for the superintendent and the board attorney. I really feel like we need to pay our new attorney salary that's commensurate with our staff attorney and so with our prior board attorney. I think that it is, I was sorry to hear Ms. Patrica mention the tax returns. I think that's totally insulting. Do we ask the people that come in as district administrators, and I can think of several, to show what they made before they became a certain position? I can guarantee that there were a lot of people that jumped significantly. That's irrelevant, though. We hired this lady because we saw that she is a hard worker. We saw the wonderful attributes that she has. I absolutely respect equity in the positions. I go back to what Ms. Fisher said. If you look at our district organizational charts, you will see that the position of board attorney is right up there under the superintendent and next to the board. It's a very special position, and I think it's insulting to throw out these, you know, to say for fifteen thousand, I respect that. We're insulting, you know, we're not doing our due diligence and for the community. I totally disagree because I think we wouldn't be doing what's right for the community if we nickel and dime our candidate to the point that, and perhaps this is something that some people have in mind, to the point that she decides, I don't want any part of this organization. So I hold fast to at least one seventy-five, and to give less is, to me, is an insult. That's it. Vaughn, Ms. Gittens?
So previously, the board agreed, the previous, before I was on the board, that they agreed and paid one seventy-five to our last attorney. When we got, saw the, you know, the raises for all of the chiefs, no one turned that down, I don't believe, and said, oh, I will turn mine down because I want to do what's best for the community. At this point, it would be not only an insult, but a travesty to hire someone with twenty years of experience. You know, whether it be in one side of the law or the other, it is the law. And it would be a travesty to offer someone less than the chiefs and the staff attorney are making. Mr. Dotick made one seventy-five, plus whatever perks and all of that, and I think we got that in the mail and the email saying how much his total package was. And Ms. Morgan, I I have to say something to your comment about people, you know, saying your one thing or another. I'm not saying that at all, but I am saying to the community, what is different in Mr. Dotick making one seventy-five, our previous attorney, and hiring a female minority that we want to pay less? I cannot sit back and just see that go on. If you look at anything in our nation right now, the salaries for minorities, for one thing, and for females is an issue. We can't make that an issue with the school board. There is no reason at all for giving someone less than our last attorney and that our last attorney made two years ago.
Thank you, Mrs. Gittens, Ms. Patrica, then Ms. Giovinelli.
So this is a business decision. I just want to make that clear. I'm not hearing a lot of focus on the business aspects of the decision-making here. Also, I want you all to know that I rely on my experience when I make suggestions and when I ask for information. And my second job out of law school, I was required to provide my last three years of tax returns in order to determine what my salary should be. So it, I'm sorry if you find it insulting, but that's been my own life experience. Now, that was in the private sector, and and as I said earlier, I can understand why an employee would not want to provide that. But if we're looking at hiring any public employee from another district, those salaries are public record. So we can always find those. We can find out what the market demanded for those people previously and make that comparison in order to determine what we should be paying now. So I'm really genuinely sorry if my colleagues found that to be insulting. But again, I bring to this board my prior experience, and I am, I have a laser focus on the business nature of this decision. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then Ms. Giovinelli?
Well, actually, if that's the case, I I'm actually am very embarrassed because we know, when we promoted Mr. Dotick to board attorney, he got a fifty-six thousand dollar increase, and no one said a word, not one stinking word. It went by smoothly, no, no issues. None of this kind of form ever happened in questioning, ever happened for Mr. Dotick. So now, all of a sudden, we need tax returns? We should, we need Mr. Dotick's tax returns. So why did we give him a fifty-six thousand dollar increase? Because we felt it was warranted. I don't see where this is any different than than Mrs. Bruno's. And and I actually, I I actually am now thinking maybe on the same lines of what Ms. Gittens just said. I mean, is it because she's a female? Because of her skin color? What is the reason why we're having this conversation today? And picking apart what we think our employees should be ma- making and comparable, it's still less than private sector. So I don't see what's wrong with paying her a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which is what Mr. Dotick made over a year ago. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Jordan, did you have your hand up? I don't see it on the, okay, no. Okay, any other comments? Okay. One of the conversations that I did have the privilege of having with Ms. Dupree Bruno during negotiations was how enthusiastic and excited she was about the possibility of serving not only the board but the public as the board attorney. And we did discuss many times her legal experience. And I think in any time you start a new job, there is a learning curve, and I know that she has made provisions to work with Mr. Quick and Wyserota in making that transition at her own expense. So I just wanted to add that, and then I'll ask Mr. Quick if he has any further input.
I mean, I guess my my biggest question would be in terms of getting back to Ms. Dupree Bruno. Is the board looking to have a consensus today on a number, or or is the board looking for me to communicate with each of you individually? I know some of you have stated amounts today, and I've been writing them down. But is the board looking for me to communicate with with those of you who have not stated an amount individually after this to to negotiate based upon where I see at least four votes up to that, I should say. Obviously, we'll try to negotiate the best price possible.
Okay, thank you. So then those who did not give an amount, do you want to give an amount now, or do you want to communicate directly with Mr. Quick? And so, Ms. Vaughn? We have yours. Ms. Giovinelli, we have yours. Mrs. Morgan, we have yours. I will go with the one seventy-five after this discussion, which was lower than that before this discussion. Ms. Jordan? Okay. And Ms. Patrica?
It seems as if there's consensus surrounding a hundred and seventy-five thousand. I can't believe that I have to say numbers out loud in a public meeting. And I I can't vote yes for that.
Thank you. Okay, I I don't, yes. Ms. Gittens?
Yes, I clicked something and I lost you guys. Can you tell me how to get the video back up?
You're on. I see you and I hear you.
Okay, I don't see anybody else. Okay, so maybe we can fix that offline. Yes, I vote to to go with finishing this today with at least the one seventy-five with the discussion to have Mr. Quick have the discussion with Ms. Bruno.
Okay, then we do have consensus. So, Mr. Quick, yeah, Ms. Ms. Jordan?
Okay, I feel that we, I personally, if Mr. Williams is making one seventy, I don't see how, and he's a general counsel for the entire district with multiple staff under him. I don't see how we can start. Miss, I I can't see how we can start her up at one seventy-five.
Okay, and and I think again, if I may call your attention to the district organizational chart. Okay, so the board attorney is two steps above legal services. That's one thing, and then there is the history of the former board attorney's salaries and the comparisons of other districts. Just wanted to throw that out there. So I I think we do anyway have consensus. So then.
Yeah, I understand what the consensus is.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vaughn, you have a comment? Please unmute yourself. No, that's unmuted. I have actually a question, a procedural question for tomorrow. Since it seems that our consensus is at one seventy-five, would, you know, what what would be the next step tomorrow? Would it be that we bring a motion? That somebody bring a motion for that amount, or?
Ms. Vaughn, what I would recommend is I will communicate with Ms. Dupree Bruno once we hang up to confirm that she, that is an agreeable amount with her. If so, I will plug that into the contract, and we will put the contract with the with the approval of the chair. We'll bring the contract back in in toto as good cause item so that the board can vote to approve the contract.
So thanks. That's just what I needed to know. Okay. And so with this consensus, then that's the next step. And Mr. Quick, you'll bring back. And Mr. Quick, you'll bring back, uh, your completed negotiation with Ms. Dupree Bruno tomorrow for good cause.
Yes, I'll communicate with her as soon as we hang up and then I can recirculate, assuming that she's agreeable with that number.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments on this part of the agenda? Okay, so then moving right along to the school board auditor position. And at this point, um, I, it's my understanding that Dr. Decimore and Susan Malay are available, um, to address the board auditor position, which since the most recent, um, Auditor General's report, um, is an exception that we have a firm and not a, uh, an internal employee. So then can I ask for, um, Dr. Decimore or Ms. Malay to join us and give us the basic information that was shared by the Auditor General's office? Yeah, Dr. Atkins, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you.
This is they're preparing to come on board. Um, want to share with the board that is preliminary and tentative findings. So that is like the next step in the process. And then what happens from here, and I'm sure they can, you know, give you more detail. But that's not necessarily the final product because the district has to, uh, to respond to that document within 30 days, which we will. Um, but, um, that's again, you know, we're not at the end stage right now. We're just at another step in the, in the process.
Thank you very much for that explanation. Hi, Dr. Deci- oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Quick.
So I just wanted to, while we were waiting for them, I wanted to let you get everybody know because one of the recommendations on finding two, uh, was to speak with the, uh, Department of Education with regard to the, um, the use of an outside firm. I wanted to make sure the board was aware that, that I saw that and I have already reached out to, uh, the DOE's General Counsel, Matthew Mears. Uh, he is, um, analyzing that internally. And, uh, we are going to be circling back, uh, later this week to have that further discussion. So, um, I will make sure that I will coordinate with staff as well so that staff is available, uh, for any call on that, uh, as well. But I just want to make sure that the board was, uh, aware that we're sensitive to that and we're sensitive to the timing so we've started that ball moving.
Thank you very much, Mr. Quick. I'd forgotten about that. Thank you for bringing that in. Dr. Decimore, how are you?
Well, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
Good, good. Just wanted to, um, let you know that yes, uh, we were here. So, um, I don't know that I have any additional to add to what Dr. Atkins was saying, that it is not, uh, the, the final report from the Auditor General's office and will, um, stand ready to work with Dr. Atkins, you all, and Mr. Quick on the next steps related to.
Okay, thank you. So then, um, it's a wait and see what happens with our, um, response to the Auditor General's office within 30 days and what the outcome or the final report will be. But I just wanted all board members to be aware of that information, um, from the Auditor General's office because, uh, I think it's something that we need to have in the back of our minds and be thinking about. Okay, yes, Ms. Gittens?
I just wanted to make sure that on record that it's, they did not say we had, that there was a, a law or anything out there about it at this time. So I am glad to see we're looking into it and not just, uh, doing a knee jerk and try to, uh, change what we're doing. And the question, the other question I have, uh, for the superintendent, um, I forget the gentleman's name that, that left from the district's internal auditor. Uh, have we replaced him yet in the, um, audit department? And maybe that's for, uh, Ms. Dr. Decimore.
I know Dr. Decimore's was involved in the interview process, so she can give you the latest update.
Thank you.
We, we are in the midst of the interview process now, so we have not yet completed that. So he has not been replaced yet, but we're in the evaluation process now.
And, and how many people are in that department at this time?
Three, besides the director, there are three.
Okay. And there, is there a, something out there that shows what their role is and what they are? Uh, I mean, are they doing overall like district, uh, audits or that type of thing? Uh, is there something that can tell us what they do?
Uh, well, yes, their, their job description is, uh, or they're all auditors. So yes, and, and at this point, what the focus of the department has been happened on the audits of the internal funds at the individual schools. Uh, we have talked about, um, you know, potentially, um, changing what the scope of that is when the new director comes on to be able to help, um, do some additional, you know, auditing of other areas, um, within our departments to help with internal controls and things such as that. Um, but at this point, the focus has been, um, basically the internal funds of the individual schools.
And previously though, a few years back, didn't they do more internal audit type functions other than just that one?
Uh, well, the, the, the department is small, so historically, the major focus of the internal audit department has been internal audits of the internal funds at schools. Thank you. And then, uh, the major focus, I don't mean to imply that they had not done any, you know, other things, but the major focus had been, um, with the internal funds at the schools.
Thank you, Dr. Decimore. Ms. Vaughn? Please unmute yourself. Uh, since, since we're on that topic, obviously, the job has been advertised. Are we looking at both internal and, uh, external candidates for this, Dr. Decimore's?
Yes, we have, uh, both internal and external, um, candidates that are on, um, the slate for interview.
Okay, and is there a requirement? I mean, I, I know there's a job description, but that, um, the person is a certified public accountant? Or what's the, um, I, I don't remember what Mr. Brown's credential, wasn't he a CPA?
Uh, no, I believe Mr. Brown was a certified internal auditor, if I remember correctly. And that being, um, there are several, uh, designations that are preferred for the job, certified internal auditor, um, CPA or CP, which is a certified fraud examiner.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
As, as preferred on the job, on the.
Preferred, preferred. So hopefully we can find, um, somebody that actually has their certifications. That, that would be my, um, my hope anyway. But we're, we look forward to see who, um, who makes the.
Yes, either has those or certainly in a position to, um, you know, receive those in time, yes.
Ms. Gittens?
Um, I have one last question. Ms. Decimore, Dr. Decimore, I'm sorry. I don't want to leave that on. Um, how do you see the relationship with, uh, the person that you hired to be in charge of internal, um, auditing and the school board auditor?
So, yeah, thanks for, thanks for the question because it's a good one. We certainly see them, um, working together in conjunction, um, to be able to, um, you know, cover the spectrum of all of the things that the school district and the school board views as items to be, um, examined and, and audited in any individual year. Um, we have certain things that by law that we have to do. Um, and certainly we have some things that although it may not be by law, um, certainly gives us some, uh, increased exposure that we want to make sure, um, that we're, we are examining each year. Um, but a- a- as a team, as a district team, we should be, um, you know, in agreement on the types of high-profile things or, um, high-risk areas that we want to look at. In between all of the resources that we have, we should be able to accomplish, um, being able to audit or examine each of those risk areas to come up with the best answers and options that we keep for the district. So certainly it's a, it's a collaborative effort, um, to accomplish our risk mitigation across the district.
And wouldn't that expand the internal auditor position though, on your side, to more than just auditing the schools if there were that connection? I, I'm just saying that to maybe keep in mind when you are, you know, looking for that person, that that tentative relationship dotted line will occur. And so therefore, uh, that person that you hired would have to be of that caliber. Just, just throwing that out there, but thank you.
Yes, uh, yes, and I agree absolutely. As I mentioned earlier, even though that internal funds have been the primary focus in the past, what we are certainly looking for in the future, um, is expanding that to be able to look at, um, other high-risk areas, um, across our district as well. So we are definitely in the future looking towards that expansion of the position. So agreed.
Thank you, Dr. Decimore. Board members, are there any other questions or comments for Dr. Decimore, uh, regarding the school board auditor position? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, Dr. Decimore. We appreciate you. Stay well and your family. And we will move on to number three on the agenda, which is the agenda review for tomorrow's regular board meeting. I would like to ask your indulgence and can I call a few minute recess, um, before we move on? Please. Okay. Yeah. Yes, five minutes. I can't hear you, Ms. Patrica, but I saw your fingers up. So five-minute recess, please. Thank you very kindly.
Finally, too.
And we can start. Okay, it's 2:23. Five-minute recess is ended and we will resume the meeting. And at this time, we will, uh, have our, um, regular board meeting agenda of review. Dr. Atkins, do you have anything that you'd like to start with?
Well, we, uh, the first item was, uh, from the consent agenda, D2 ratification of the purchase of hotspots in response to the state urgency pertaining to COVID-19. So, uh, the question was, uh, 500 more requests in one day is huge. What was done to precipitate the leap? So I'm asking, uh, that Mr. Davis, uh, provide you with a response at this time. So he'll come up to the, um, to the district presenter slot in just a minute. that many districts were counting on, not just us, to supply internet access for underserved students, were not available for those students. As soon as we realized that, we looked to final supply of hotspots, and that's what led us to our T-Mobile agreement here.
Whoops, am I wrong? Okay.
Yes.
First, thank you so much. I know you guys are meeting yourself, coming back on 75 these days for all the work that you're doing, and we really appreciate it. The question I have is, and being not techie, the cost for a hotspot, but then also, previously we had, I think it was Comcast that offered the $9 a month, and did we utilize that? Did we try to maybe come up with something with them, or any other partnerships? And I'm gathering, since you used T-Mobile, that you had kind of, you know, looked around to see which other options, because we're constantly hearing about, you know, this company is going to do this for kids, and, you know, helping these districts out. Can you speak to that for a moment?
I sure can. So the Internet Essentials program is really, that's for the individual. That's not something that's worked at, let's say, the district or organization level. And we certainly did, you know, communicate that, you know, out to the district, you know, using various channels to get that out the door. The issue that you face with Internet Essentials program, including the first two months for free, and that's admirable, is that, you know, you have to have the cable infrastructure in your home in order to connect and initiate that hotspot. The issue is, we have many students that don't necessarily have that kind of connectivity in their home to even initiate the Internet Essentials kit. Hence the reason why we discounted that at a broader level. It certainly has helped some, but we still have thousands of students in need of connectivity. But as far as negotiating, you know, I can assure you that unless something radical happens, that Xfinity won't be negotiating below $9.99. I've been in contact with them as well, up to their executive ranks.
And the other thing, I said to you guys in an article, where some districts are using school buses as hotspots, what's our potential for that?
So first off, we don't actually advocate for doing that at this time. There's a couple of reasons why. One, the reality is to retro a bus that would offer anything but close proximity, which would quite frankly be sort of against the order that we have right now, you know, bringing students in in close proximity in gatherings greater than 10. The other issue that we have there is, we have quite a number of students, as you know, that don't have transportation, maybe to make it to that bus. And so there's an increased exposure of risk just traveling, you know, for example, by foot to a bus. It would only serve so many students, number one. And number two, you know, without an incredible cost, you know, there would be no way to actually retro the bus to actually serve more than a very small handful of students, which is a lot smaller than the actual need.
Okay, because I was thinking that they parked the bus, and it became the, you know, kind of, you know, broadcasting out from the bus. I didn't realize they had to be on the bus.
No, they don't have to be on the bus. It is actually parked and broadcasting. When I say proximity, the reality is, is they would have to travel to that same parking lot, and naturally do their work for the amount of time that they would need to do it, versus the safety of their own home. So yes, you can park or sit outside the bus, but the reality is, we would prefer to keep our students safe and secure by not having them necessarily congregate in and around a bus. You know, I know you hear about staying inside of a vehicle, but the reality is, that's not going to happen for everyone. So the next thing you know, we have a heightened exposure to, let's say, COVID-19, because we have a lot of people in one area. So again, how other counties have done it, as an example, it's quite frankly very limiting to the number of connections, and the proximity, you know, to that device or to that bus is very close. In other words, they're not able to sit in their home a few blocks away and connect to a bus in a parking lot.
So the final question, I promise this is it, but if we're purchasing all these hotspots and everything now, and this too shall pass, that is my mantra, and I continue to say it, and after it's done, what is our future goal for the use of these hotspots?
Well, I can assure you that that went into our consideration. You know, our digital divide here is great. You know, certainly the number of hotspots that we acquired here will really help the neediest of families, but not necessarily every single student. So we are working in every capacity that we can to ensure that that contact rate, so I'm sure we'll hear from Dr. Spiro later about that, fantastic views, won't spoil it, is all about making sure that we get that out to the student. Now, let's just say, should this end, and, you know, at the end of the school year? We've already factored in the fact that we would not utilize during the summer months, and given the actual supply and the shortage, that this is a one-year active hotspot contract for those 3,000 devices. That will actually go or carry us to the end of FY21, which actually helps, you know, complement our existing Digital Divide program. You know, should we venture into, let's say, virtual programs over the summer, you know, we won't be using the T-Mobile hotspots for that. Our first go-to will be our Sprint 1 Million project hotspots.
Ms. Vaughn? Thank you, and thank you, Trey, for all that you and the department are doing. And I certainly, absolutely support getting all of our kids online. Two things. First, I guess, part of the reason I was confused is because looking at different numbers that are sent out for updates, and as a second, which was Thursday, it said there were 1402 requests, and I think you said, what, 1184? And the way, it's just kind of confusing, the numbers we're getting, and I guess I'd forgotten about that there are different companies that are offering, that we have different contracts and all of that. So what, I guess, is there a way that maybe at some point, you can kind of summarize it in writing for us, maybe by the end of the week? Because we've spent money on, what, the 2,000 Chromebooks? Did we plan to get those at this time as replacements? They're going to become replacements for the next school year? And then, okay, a one-year contract, that is a lot of money for these hotspots. And I guess, when you distribute, it's actual physical piece of equipment, like a router or something like that, that goes to the kids, that they have, the families, they have to come pick up? Is that how that is?
It is. It's a small hotspot. It looks like, sort of like about the size of a deck of cards.
Okay.
And also...
I haven't seen, you know, I have like the service with the router and all of that stuff, but, okay.
So I was going to answer your question in a couple of parts here. Let me start first with the Chromebooks. So the 2,000 books, first of all, are already in use and deployed and helping with our access. The good news about that is that that was already one of our sales tax initiatives to increase the elementary density. So as I was telling the team, this decision was made more on the fact that we were going to do that anyway with sales tax funds, than it was just a tactical decision, for example, because of COVID-19. So that hopefully answers the 2,000 Chromebooks. To answer you around the hotspots, this might be a different way to look at it, is we're at about 2,200 hotspots at present, or are actually deployed and in use. So that has exhausted all of our Sprint 1 Million hotspots. That 1,184 number that you have is in addition to that. Those are the students on a waitlist. So, you know, you're going to have an additional 1,184, and I can assure you that that number is actually already, has already gone up. So as soon as the initial 1,000 arrive, which is currently tomorrow, we've already exhausted that allotment already. So anyway, I think that our estimates for the 3,000, you know, were very, very conservative, but it certainly will, you know, address the neediest of our population. And relative to the one year, let me ask, let me explain this, too. Given the situation back to the global supply chain disruption, the reality is that no vendor was going to give hotspots for three months, that this had to be a one-year deal, which is quite customary anyway. In our case, we took advantage of what's called a government unlimited LTE program, which allows us unlimited access to the internet for that particular device. But it also gives us, the device is included. If you were to split that out, the device is actually $84 apiece, and we actually own those devices. So we can use that on future services. And we all believe, by the way, that the byproduct of COVID-19, you know, will be a lot more inward thinking on the sake of companies, you know, looking at other options for school districts and needs. So we hope to take advantage of some new pricing kind of past the first year, but still have access to the hotspot.
Okay, so just how I can understand, now that I understand it's a small device, and they're $80 apiece, and now we own those devices, so if we needed a second year, then we would just have a smaller amount that would just be the contract to cover, what is it, like 5G or something, is it like with the cellphone?
Yeah, these are actually 4G LTE.
4G, okay.
If we were in Atlanta, there'd be some spots, for example, to have 5G, but not here, not in the neighborhood, a couple of test beds.
Okay, so we would get these back from the students that have it now, or would they?
Yes.
Would they be able to, if they wished, to pick up a contract on their own, if they had those resources?
Right, that's right. Currently, what we're looking at doing is actually like they would return Chromebooks, because, to give you an example, this is our elementary refresh year, so then it moves to middle, and then it moves to high. So each year, we actually recover those devices at the end of the school year to refresh those appropriately, whether they were placed with new equipment, or whether or not they are refreshed, just the existing device. In this case, that would be like, you know, your secondary grades. So the same would happen when they turn in the Chromebooks, they would turn in the hotspots at present. Now, again, there is some discussion around the potential for virtual programs in the summer, but no decision I'm aware of has been made there. But should that be the case, then we may not, of course, take that back, depending on if we are in the same situation with COVID-19. So we've got some options.
Okay, that clarifies a lot. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Board members, any other questions or comments for Mr. Davis? Ms. Giovanni?
I just had one. There was an article, a link article, regarding something that Dr. Spiro said, and it said it included, for 500,000, included the hotspots and the computers, but that's not the case. What was the additional $2.50 for? Is that for more hotspots? And then, I didn't understand that.
So, okay, I might need a little info here on that, because the emergency purchase was for 720,000. So now, you may be thinking about the 200 Chromebooks? I think your mic is muted. There we go.
Yeah, no. It was, the cost was going to be $500,000, and it was out of the tax dollars, and it was for hotspots and computers. He lumped them both together in that article, so he must have been mistaken. Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, I mean, I hope there's more context there, because the only, you know, purchase that ISD has made relative to sales tax funds would be for the initial additional, excuse me, 2,000 Chromebooks, which is part of our elementary density, the increase of that. So that would not have included... we've already exhausted that allotment already. So anyway, I think that our estimates for the 3,000, you know, were very, very conservative, but it certainly will, you know, address the neediest of our population. And relative to the one year, let me ask, let me explain this too. Given the situation back to the global supply chain disruption, the reality is that no vendor was going to give hotspots for three months. That this had to be a one-year deal, which is quite customary anyway. In our case, we took advantage of what's called the Government Unlimited LTE Program, which allows us unlimited access to the internet for that particular device. But it also gives us, the device is included. If you were to split that out, the device is actually $84 apiece. And we actually own those devices. So we can use that on future services. And we all believe, by the way, that the byproduct of COVID-19, you know, will be a lot more inward thinking on the sake of companies, you know, looking at other options for school districts and needs. So we hope to take advantage of some new pricing kind of past the first year, but still have access to the hotspot.
Okay, so just how I can understand, now that I understand it's a small device, and they're $84 apiece, so now we own those devices. So if we needed a second year, then we would just have a smaller amount that would just be the contract to cover, what is it, like 5G or something, is it like with the cellphone?
Yeah, these are actually 4G LTE.
4G, okay.
If we were in Atlanta, there would be some spots, for example, to have 5G, but not here. Not in the neighborhood, a couple of test beds.
Okay, so we would get these back from the students that have it now? Or would they?
Yes.
Would they be able to, if they wished, to pick up a contract on their own? If they had those resources?
Right, that's right. Currently, what we're looking at doing is actually like they would return Chromebooks, because, to give you an example, this is our elementary refresh year. So then it moves to middle, and then it moves to high. So each year, we actually recover those devices at the end of the school year to refresh those appropriately, whether they were placed with new equipment or whether or not they are refreshed, just the existing device. In this case, that would be like, you know, your secondary grades. So the same would happen when they turn in the Chromebooks, they could turn in the hotspots at present. Now, again, there is some discussion around the potential for virtual programs in the summer, but no decision I'm aware of has been made there. But should that be the case, then we may not, of course, take that back, depending on if we are in the same situation with COVID-19. So we've got some options.
Okay, that clarifies a lot. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions or comments for Mr. Davis? Ms. Giammanelli?
I just had one. There was an article, a link article regarding something that Dr. Spiro said. It said it included, for 500,000, included the hotspots and the computers. But that's not the case. What was the additional 250 for? Is that for more hotspots? And then, I didn't understand that.
So, okay, I might need a little info here on that, because the emergency purchase was for 720,000. So now, you may be thinking about the 200 Chromebooks? I think your mic is muted. There we go.
Yeah, no. It was, the cost was going to be $500,000, and it was out of the tax dollars. And it was for hotspots and computers. He lumped them both together in that article. So he must have been mistaken. Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, I mean, I hope there's more context there, because the only, you know, purchase that ISD has made relative to sales tax funds would be for the initial additional, excuse me, 2,000 Chromebooks, which is part of our elementary density increase of that. So that would not have included the hotspots.
Yeah, the article said like 2,000 Chromebooks and hotspots, and he lumped them together. But I'll send you the link to the link article, and then you can let me know. Thank you.
Sure, no problem.
So then I have a question. So Trey, what was the total amount then for the hotspots? 3,000 hotspots?
The 3,000 hotspots was $720,000. That is for a one-year active contract for all 3,000 hotspots.
So then you said it was 80-something dollars per hotspot that we own now? And the service is how much a month or a year?
So that actually works out to $20 per month per device? And that includes the, what is normally an $84 device? We're effectively getting the device at no charge by doing the unlimited option, which is $20 a month. If we had done, let's say, a lesser option, which would not give the amount of data required for our students to actually operate on a monthly level, kind of conference content that we serve, then we would not have owned the hotspot. So then, at the end of our term, we would have been left trying to negotiate again with additional hotspots, which would have made the price increase.
Okay, okay. I just, I thought I sent this to the superintendent, but I couldn't find it. I was a little bit, I mean, 3,000 hotspots. How did that end up being $720,000?
Well, that's the rate for T-Mobile for education rate. And the other issue is that, you know, again, if we think back to the, you know, global supply chain issue, literally, the devices are non-existent. Like, attempt to go out and purchase 3,000 hotspots today, and you're not going to find that. You know, so, and we made that decision based on, you know, the need of our district. And quite frankly, 3,000 was very conservative number. But it wasn't only based on the surveys, for example, that we had done in the past. It was also, you know, quite frankly, based on the availability of product. It was kind of like the 2,000 Chromebooks. We literally got some of the last batches of Chromebooks in the country. The same goes for these hotspots. But that is an existing T-Mobile rate. That wasn't something that we actually, you know, negotiated. But that is a part of their T-Mobile for Education program.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Board members, any other questions for Mr. Davis?
Trey, just for clarification, you're talking about overall costs, is the cost of the device itself? And then you also have to include the cost of $20 a month over a 12-month period per device? Correct?
Well, actually, the $20 per month includes the device. We actually own the device at the end of the 12 months. So the only number you really need to be concerned with is $20 per month times the 3,000 devices, and that'll give you your $720,000. If we had not selected the unlimited program data-wise, then we would have been forced to buy the hotspot separately. And the cost of that is $84 per unit. But because we went with the unlimited program, we get the hotspot included. Had no additional cost, so to speak.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Okay, Superintendent Atkins, any other comments?
No, with that one, that would take us to the next question. The next question would be, where are the district's safety protocols for staff, especially in light of the new CDC and Surgeon General recommendations? So at this time, I think Beth Quiff is in the room and may be joined by Ken Savage. Yes, there we go. Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon.
Hi.
Hi. So the question was, what are district's safety protocols for staff, especially in light of the new CDC guidelines and the Surgeon General's recommendations? So we do have a situational update that we send out daily to all of our staff, which includes any health updates that have come into us from our state and local health departments, as well as the CDC. And the recommendation Friday evening from the CDC and the Surgeon General, which you've probably heard by now, includes the public using cloth masks when they go out in public as another barrier and protection for all of us. So we will be including that in our situational update that we send out this afternoon to all of our staff, just making them aware of that new recommendation. We also include in our situational daily updates the current guidelines that are provided from the CDC. So we want to make sure that those are in the forefront of our employees' minds and that they are reminded daily to continue those precautions.
And Ms. Kitten's?
Question, I think this is for the superintendent. Can you, at this time, if you can understand, update a little bit on, you know, what we're doing as far as staff being in buildings or not? Or is that something you want to do offline?
No, I can certainly do that as a part of this update. What we are working toward right now is to get as many of our staff working remotely as we possibly can. So one of the things that, and that is something that we've consistently been working on since we started this. This, last week, we had given our school principals additional flexibility with the direction to try to get more staff home. They have done that. This week, we are looking to implement kind of a tiered approach. And that tiered approach would be, on, one example would be a school that has no construction going on or no projects going on and is not a feed site. So they're really, at this point, we feel there is not a need for that school to be open, and staff should be working remotely. But we would, of course, have a, we would have a system where that building would be checked on a regular basis by our maintenance staff or the building supervisor. The second example would be a school that does not, is again, not a feed site or a distribution site, but is a school where there is some essential project work that's occurring. The only reason for staff to be there would be to allow that person, the contractor, to be on-site, or the maintenance crew to be on-site to complete that work. And only during the portion of the time that that would have to, that work would occur. And then, of course, the cleaning that would have to take place after that. Third situation would be where you have a school that is a food distribution site. So there is a staffing requirement there for food service staff. And then we're typically asking an administrator or someone that can escalate any issue up to, to be present, and then also an SRO. The last situation is if you have a school that has all of the above. So, you know, in other words, they have essential work that has to be done and their distribution site, that would have the most staff. But again, in that situation, the majority of people working within that building would be home. So we're trying to, again, push to getting as many people possible home. And that includes, you know, where we're really having entire school staffs operating remotely from this point forward. And again, that's something that we're going to be implementing this week. I did take the opportunity to contact several superintendents and staff around the state. One of, Palm Beach being one of them, because they're, of course, a little bit ahead of us in terms of the COVID situation, you know, with the commissioner shutting those schools down until May 15th, because you've got more cases over there anticipating that we're going to see something lightly coming in the coming months. So contacted them. Also been in contact with a couple of superintendents of this side of the state, and then reached out to the Department of Education to kind of go over our plan. So based on that input, plus input from FADs, we all superintendents were on a conference call on Friday. You know, that's the recommendation that we're making is just to get as many people possible. So I think you'll have the vast majority of people working at home at this point.
And are the, like, project or construction workers that are coming into the buildings that we've already had maintenance kind of sterilized and everything, how are they coming in and observing CDC? And, you know, even wearing any kind of protective whatever? How is that working?
Yeah, anyone who's in any of our building, we are, of course, requiring them to comply with the CDC recommendations. And then, once that work is completed, we are making sure that we're doing the deep cleaning necessary after those individuals leave that site.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Before I call on Mrs. Giammanelli, who, I'm sorry, I missed your hand a few seconds ago. I just wanted to say thank you to Beth for her amazing response and to you and the staff for adapting as needed and being so responsive to not only keep the district running, but to protect our staff. So I really appreciate that. And I've heard a lot of positive comments from the public regarding that. So once again, to all of you, thanks.
Thank you. You're welcome. It's my pleasure, and it's been a team effort. So I'd like to send out that thank you to all the team members here at the district, because they've all played a part in this. So it's been a-
Yes. Thank you. I know everybody's been working really hard. Mrs. Giammanelli, did you still have something?
Just one thing. So no one is getting their temperature taken there, that's coming into any buildings, though, right?
That is correct, unless they are a food service worker. We do have screenings in place for those that are handling our food service.
Awesome. Okay. I think that's it for now. I mean, I guess if everybody's mostly staying home now, that's their reason. You know what I mean? So, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anything else in this area, Dr. Atkins?
No, I believe that was it for that area. The next one would be consent academic services approval of the Stop School Violence, the School District for Lee County Project Task, Threat Assessment for Safer Schools and Kids, FY20.
Yes.
I believe Dr. Savage is going to respond to that question, and Dr. Spiro, if needed.
Thank you. Hi, guys.
Good afternoon, board. Yes, this particular question was just asking for the actual fiscal impact to the district of the amount, and just was concerned about some of the costs, knowing it's from a budget year. You know, not being able to anticipate exactly what this upcoming year will look like from a budget standpoint. And the response here is that this is a federal grant application. It's through the U.S. Bureau of Justice Assistance, specifically for juvenile justice. And the only funds expended would be those secured if we were to receive the federal grant. The cost set aside that was referenced in the question is a value for three years that's approved by the Department of Education at a rate of 4.65%. That letter and that rate calculation is actually in that grant application as well. And they approve a letter and such. Again, these are also, all of these are just federal funds. So all funds listed within the grant are grant funds. And so this is above and beyond the budget. So it has, specifically, that's why the pursuit of these type of grants is so that the district isn't having to set aside additional funds for these kinds of things. So I hope that answers the question.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say it's a real good example of the continuing partnerships that we have with our local law enforcement to enhance our safety and security in this district. So thank you again.
That's right, Chair Fisher, that's exactly, this is with all of our, the City Fort Myers had to sign on, City Cape Coral and Lee County sheriffs also. So you're across all those. Thank you.
Thank you.
There was also an additional question that went with that. This is for January 2020. Could we please see the updates for February 2020 and if March is completed? And I think Dr. Desmore was going to answer that question for us.
Thanks, Dr. Atkins. Okay, Ms. Kitten's, I'll get to you in one second. Thanks.
Okay, good. Hello, board members. Yes, the question was whether the February and March budget amendments were complete or did we have those? No, we do not as of this point, but each of them will come to the board in subsequent board meetings.
Great, thank you. Ms. Kitten's?
The question I have, it may be for Mr. Quick. Originally on the consent items, D2 was the emergency authority piece, the 1.18. And I know that it was pulled, but on the consent item agenda now, it states that D2 is the hotspot solely. So I don't know, is that because it was pulled? And how does that work on our consent agenda? Mr. Quick?
And this was a change that was made by the superintendent, so I'll chime in, but I'll let Dr. Atkins conch in if I'm incorrect. My understanding was it was originally on there. D2 had a two-part item. One was a recommendation pursuant to policy 1.18 to extend the emergency declaration. And then there was also a second part of that, which was the ratification of the purchase of the hotspots. That first item, the recommendation to extend the emergency under policy 1.18 is not being, is no longer being recommended by the superintendent. So he withdrew that, but he is still seeking ratification of the, he is still seeking the second part, which is ratification of the purchase of the hotspots. So the only item that would be on the consent is the one that is the operative, which is solely the ratification of the hotspots. It does not include the now-removed recommendation, as that was in original, and now we're going forward on an amended item V2. But you can see in the administrative content, there is in there under the date where the original agenda item was put in, and you still have access to what the originals were, at least on ours. And then now there's an updated. Did I get that correct, Dr. Atkins?
Yes, that would be, I would say that's correct. Yes, sir.
So my question is, where do we stand at this point with the emergency authority and the 1.18? Is that now defunct because it was taken off? Or is it still in effect until we address it?
No, it's, the way the policy is written is that the declaration, the superintendent can invoke the declaration. And if he seeks to extend it, he needs to bring it back to the, a recommendation back to the board. He's not seeking to extend it. The policy, the emergency declaration now will have ended because it's not being extended.
So is there something written that tells us? I know we received notification that it started on the 13th of March. Is there something then that we received that says when it was no longer in effect?
Your policy as written doesn't have a specific end date. It just says that it needs to be brought back as a recommendation to the board at the next scheduled meeting. So I would say that that is effectively the end date, although it could be clearer in all fairness in the policy.
Yes, but with that verbiage, in other words, it has not been brought forward. We haven't, it's inception or its conclusion. So according to the policy, then, does it not need to be brought forward to say, and for the superintendent to inform us that it's no longer needed or whatever? I just, it's kind of like dangling in my mind.
I would say it ends on its own terms. So it would only need to be brought back if it needs to be, if it's going to be extended. If it's not, it would just end on its own terms, which is at the next scheduled board meeting. Certainly, although the superintendent has proffered today that he is not seeking to extend it, but at least on the terms of the policy, it would terminate on its own. It doesn't require board action to terminate it. It only requires board action to extend it.
And then, and Mr. Quick, it's my understanding, it would- And then, and Mr. Quick, it's my understanding it would be upon the next board meeting if I didn't request an extension, which would take it to the board meeting.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it talks about as a board meeting, yes, not as a workshop, yes.
Ms. Javonelli?
So I just want to be clear. So it basically it terminates tomorrow if it's not brought up at tomorrow's meeting.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Quick and Dr. Atkins, and so moving right along.
I believe the next item is F three, approval of the budget amendment dated January thirty first, twenty twenty to amend the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty annual budget. And the question is, under the situation right now, we are not sure that what what it will be for the next school year based on. The indicators, federal and state, I believe we should be careful forecasting our budget for the coming year. So Dr. Desmore will respond, but I will also say that that is something that we have already, you know, definitely considered. Uh, because COVID nineteen is certainly going to have a substantial impact on our budget. Uh, because you're talking about a a large portion of our budget comes from sales tax revenue. Uh, which with the tourism industry being hit particularly hard, local business being, well, actually across the entire nation at this point, unemployment. Uh, we know that FY twenty one budget is going to definitely be severely impacted. Uh, we do have notification that has come to us from the Department of Education and other sources. That we do believe that it's not a matter of if, and actually this information came from FADS. Uh, so let me make sure I'm giving you the correct information. FADS has indicated that it's not if the legislative body goes into special session, but when. And and that will focus on the budget. Having said that, we have gotten commitments from the Department of Education that this year's FY twenty budget will remain intact. I think you've heard that. However, um, in anticipation of a bleak forecast for the following year. Uh, we are trying to be very conservative. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Desmore.
Thank you, Dr. Desmore.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Um, yes, all of that is true. We are being very careful at this point. As Dr. Atkins said, we know and feel very strongly that the budget given to us from the legislature for next fiscal year will be significantly reduced. And so we have that in mind as we move forward with our planning for the FY twenty one budget year.
Thank you. I have a question. So um, I I know there'll be a special session. Um, we have some emergency funds and are we expending those and are we incurring a deficit due to this so far?
Not at not at this point, no. In some respects, there's some, you know, some dollars that we have been typically spending that we're not spending right now, right? Because, you know, we don't have a physical school in section, so think fuel for buses and things like that. So.
Right.
Um, and we haven't had any reduction in our revenue for the FY twenty for the current year budget at this point. So um, no deficit at this point, no emergency funds that we've had to dip into at this point. Really, we believe the question is going to be for next fiscal year's budget now, but will be received. Um, and how will that impact based on, you know, the carry forward funds we're pulling from this year? What emergency funds we may have had from this year that will carry forward to next year that we may have to utilize? Um, what will our reserves look like and what will the decisions that we make for next budget year? How will all of those be impacted by the changes that are now going on in the economy?
Thank you very much. So that's partly the good news. And again, you know, thanks to the superintendent and his staff for the work that they've done. Because I think it has kept us solvent and moving and an important key part of this community. Thank you. Thank you, Amy. On Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, and um, your your question kind of answered half of my question. Because I'm going to ask Dr. Desmore, with all the extras we've been spending, surely there are a few things in. Like the fuel for the buses that that we're spending. That that said, are we currently, I'm passing gas pumps. It looks like the price of fuel is way down right now. Um, are we taking advantage of that?
Well, there's there's only so much fuel we can store. So our transport transportation takes care of making sure that. Um, the fuel tanks that we have are full at any given point. So we've, you know, done that. If it is a matter of you saying potentially renegotiating the current fuel contract that we have or other things such as that in place. Um, you know, yes, we, I I can't say that we particularly talked about renegotiating our fuel contract right now. Um, there are different things that procurement is looking at to see, you know, what, you know, are we being able to take advantage of the best rates that we have out there for certain things right now? Especially those things, you know, that we're having to procure at this point. Um, but there are, you know, many vendors as well that wouldn't necessarily lock into a specific rate for an entire year based on what's going on right now. Um, okay, yeah, I I think I understand what your question is. So you're saying, are we looking to. Advantage of all the different rates that we may have at our contracts right now in order to take advantage of some other cost savings that we may have. Um, so we'll we'll make sure that we're, you know, looking into that as best we can and giving superintendent updates where we may have some ability to do that.
Okay, thank you. And and as I said, it was, you know, I've seen on the news about the plummeting cost for um for fuel. And just passing the gas pumps, seeing some prices that are really low. So I mean, I I know you guys know what you're doing and procurement does, but just wanted to put it out there that. You know, this might be a really great time to lock in those lower prices.
Mm hmm.
And yes, this it's it's not too soon to be pulling in all our collective belts at this time for next year. Because we know it's going to be, it's, you know, it's it's going to be rough. People don't want to use the D word, depression. But um, I I think especially in this area, given the tourism and and all of that. And and also the fact that we rely so much on now that we look to our tax dollars from the sales tax. Um, it's it's just going to be a rough year, isn't it?
Yes, yes, we do. Yes, we do believe it will have a significant impact. So I appreciate the sentiment. Many of the, let's say, for example, the fuel contract that we have in place, some of them are based on um particular indices as it relates to, you know, the current market. So a particular markup on, say, the, you know, the average cost of a barrel of oil for a particular time period. So as you see the costs floating down, our contracts would or our prices that we pay would also float down based on how the contract is written. Um, but again, I understand the spirit of of what you're saying. So and we will be actively searching to see where we could potentially. Um, be able to cost save for the district at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kittens.
Uh, we have all heard, I guess, through FSBA and other sources that for the last quarter. We've already seen the superintendent stated that we've already received all of our funding um to to work through this last quarter. In areas, for example, in transportation where we, it's one of our biggest items and we are saving money on that. Are any of those funds?
Oh, I I lost her. I assume.
Yeah, Ms. Kittens, we lost you. Okay. Ms. Javonelli, were you saying something? Because you're muted.
No, I just said it looks like she's disconnected. She's not even here. That's all.
Yeah, okay.
We lost her completely. I don't even think she knows, it looks like.
Oh, okay. Well, um, we'll wait for her to figure it out unless Susan wants to text her.
Okay, um, Trey says that we are contacting her right now to make sure that she knows she did get disconnected and get her back on as soon as possible.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Desmore. Any other questions or comments while we wait?
Yeah, uh, no, I just, I I I think bottom line is we, you know, understand the severity of the situation. So I think that we know and can certainly expect that for the FY twenty one um budget cycle. We will have a significant impact on the information that we have received from the legislature so far. So we will have to, you know, we're planning for that. And then as we receive additional information from the legislature, which will of course be telling, you know, updating you all as well.
Okay, I'm sorry. I I lost everybody.
Yes, that's okay. We were waiting for you to come back.
Well, but no, the question basically is, the funding that we receive, is it like you have to use it within this quarter? Or because we don't have this expense, can it be carried over? Or do you have to use it or lose it type thing? I'm not sure about that.
It will. Well, it well, it depends on what kind of funding source you're talking about. So let me talk about, you know, basically like our FEFP funds. Um, which is the bulk of where the bulk of where our general fund revenues come from. So for our FEFP funds, um, no, it's not use it or lose it. And they did say, um, you know, that they anticipated we would be receiving all of those funds. We get paid through the FEFP, the district, right, gets paid through the FEFP twice a month. So we haven't yet received all of those revenues, but we anticipate that we will. And for those FEFP revenues, if we don't use them, then they will generally carry forward to the next year. Okay, other funding sources that may not necessarily be the case, such as, you know, grant funds that you may have to ask for specific carryover for. Um, before our FEFP funds, they will roll over if unutilized.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Atkins. Shall we move on? Thanks, Amy.
Hey, Amy, don't go anywhere, please.
Right, I was just going to stay right here, actually.
Next question had had related to our contract for milk with from July seven or July, April seventh to July. Have you seen more or less use of these items?
Yes, so we are receiving, we're seeing less usage at this point since we're not serving as many meals as we normally would have if we had been in session in our um in our physical buildings. Um, you all have been receiving the daily updates as far as the number of meals that we're serving through our feeding program. Um, so this is a renewal of, well, this is a redo of our contract. Uh, this is basically putting in place for us to start to work with a new provider that will be better able to fulfill our needs. The former vendor we had, we have issues with contract performance. So putting this contract up right now will ensure that we move to a vendor that's going to be able to better fulfill our needs. Um, and give us the quality that we and our customers have come to expect. And be able to have our, the service as far as our feeding program remain unaltered and uninterrupted.
All right, so if we're okay, then I can move to the next item, which is. Human resources. Uh, that is, first question is, thank you for the administrative placement on the agenda and. I'm sorry, in these trying uncertain times, I believe we as a governance team must agree to give as much support to administrators as possible. Uh, we should make administrative decisions as soon as possible, not waiting decision. And protocols will require a team, which is why I'm requesting the positions that were previously pulled from the agenda be added back. In place as soon as possible, please give an update on necessary changes at Oakhamic and Gateway High School. And then we have a related question. Please clarify why are we promoting many, when many companies throughout the nation have priload laid off employees or implemented a hiring freeze? The Gateway High School bookkeeper position is that a need right now or is it something we can wait until fall? My thought was once things have settled down and the district is not learning virtually. Any is that when we start hiring and transferring employees to prepare for the upcoming school year? So Dr. Pruitt is prepared to answer that question for us.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon, everyone. Relative to the assistant principal position from Oakhamic to Gateway High School, that will be coming to you. At the not tomorrow, but the next board meeting. There's a lot that has to happen between now and when the school year starts for Gateway. And Ms. Watson has indicated that she definitely has a need for that position at this time. To help her to secure and hire all of the staff that's going to be needed to open up that school. And the person that is going to be recommended to replace Ms. Hardman at Oakhamic Middle School. Is somebody that's coming back to the district, so it's not impacting any other school at this time. That's one of the things that we evaluate right now is what is the impact of any moves that we make during this time? Um, so those positions will be coming to you at the next board meeting. Um, the same is true for the bookkeeper position. I mean, there is a lot that has to happen and things that need to be done. Um, in order to get that school up and running. Does that answer the questions or is there more needed?
Ms. Kittens?
Well, my question about specifically Ms. Hardman, because she was on the agenda previously. And because of all the COVID nineteen and everything, so I wasn't sure why it was taken off and being put off. Were you, I mean, are we waiting for the other person to come back into the district or because you're right?
Yeah, we were just evaluating it based on some questions and we wanted to make sure that we weren't doing any harm to Oakhamic Middle. Uh, this is when all the COVID stuff just started and we just wanted to make sure that. Um, that school, Oakhamic, had the resources they need and there wouldn't be a detrimental impact. And once we established that that no, it was not going to be an issue that the person. Uh, being recommended to replace Ms. Hardman is coming from outside the district. And so there would be no adverse impact to any of the schools. Um, that's why we're bringing it back at this time. So that's why we were just trying to make sure and, um, you know, make sure that everybody was going to be okay and nobody would be adversely impacted.
There was a question related to, you know, what expenses or purchases were needed right now at Gateway. Uh, anytime you're opening up a new school, like there has to be furniture for the twenty portables, equipment, special programs. And supplies. So that's that's stuff that takes place now and throughout the summer. So that the portable school is ready to operate in the fall. So, you know, I think that was a question related around the bookkeeper and she's in a place where she needs to be making purchases now.
Okay, board members, any other questions or comments for Dr. Ford?
I'm, yeah, there's one more. But I think it's related, let's see, North Fort Myers High Teacher Communications Coordinator, Community Engagement. Uh, you expressed in one on one that the North's principal already hired a replacement and you needed to bring him downtown. His replacement was hired and who was hired for his replacement?
Ms. Stillwell's going to why that.
Okay.
Hey, everybody. Um, so we did the interviews for the Coordinator of Community Engagement back in the middle of February. Um, and we notified Ms. Diggs that Adam Loy had been chosen. So she advertised and she hired a gentleman named William Butterfield from Manatee School for the Arts in Palmetto, Florida. He has a master's in history with experience teaching advanced. He has a master's in history with experience teaching advanced programs. And he started on the thirtieth. The original Coordinator of Community Engagement position was to come to you on March twenty fourth, but that didn't happen, so it's on the agenda to be approved tomorrow night. Mr. Malloy will be working on developing a comprehensive community outreach plan for the district as well as helping with immediate needs of COVID nineteen when he takes the job and he will be working remotely. I think I answered all five of the questions that Ms. G. Venelli posed, but let me know if I missed anything.
Yeah, I think that was all the, the questions under that agenda item.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Okay, well, this, bringing in some, something that just occurred to me since Dr. Pruitt presenting, just answering questions just a moment ago and we've been talking about safety. What is the status of our teachers that work in the juvenile justice system? Has there been a remote way of teaching those students that's been worked out? Or are they our only teachers that are having to actually be in contact in the classroom?
We, that is a situation that continues to evolve. Right now, they're working with packets until such time and the teachers are working remotely and doing the packets until such time as we can work with the facility and try to figure out a way to do the, the, the distance or remote learning on the computer. There's just a challenge with, because we don't own the facility and we don't run the facility. We have to work within their guidelines, but we are continuing to negotiate and work with them. But the students do have work and the teachers are, and I don't know the details of how they're getting the packets. I can certainly get that information if you'd like, but that's currently the status. So the students are being served and the teachers are working remotely.
Good, I'm really glad to hear that because I toured that, those facilities a year ago and a year ago when there was no COVID virus going around. It wasn't, since we don't get to clean.
Right.
Wasn't the best of circumstances and I was really worried about if those teachers had to actually go in there. It would just be, I think.
Yeah.
So, I'm great, I'm, I'm really glad to hear that.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gettens, do we have academic data on the students that are in DJJ?
What, what type of information?
I mean, like, you know, what, what levels of academics they're at and that type of thing. And I guess that's probably for Dr. Spyro, but I, that's something, you know, we can get, you know, but I'd like to get that information.
Right, it's sort of a revolving door and they do do, they have sort of an intake method. There's one teacher that looks at that data and I can kind of find out specifically. But it's hard because they're only there generally for, you know, twenty days. And so it's kind of this revolving door, but they assess them from where they are and then address their needs from there.
Okay, and Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. I was gonna say, most of those kids that are in those, in the DJJ are not even our students, they're from somewhere else. And then they go back home, from my understanding. And I know I was talking to one of the teachers from there and they haven't been in there. So they have been, you know, safe as our other teachers, which I really appreciate that. As well as I thought that they were going to start, to begin the virtual training for those students as well, just like everybody else.
Right, the teachers have done the training, so they're ready to go.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Okay, any other from, from Dr. Pruitt? No? Oh, oh, Ms. G. Venelli.
She left. Dr. Pruitt?
Here she is, she's back again.
Here I am.
Oh, hi. Have we looked into, I, I know several places that are, has hiring freezes. Is that something that we're even having conversations about at this point? I am concerned and I want student, I want teachers to feel confident that they're gonna be okay. But in the meantime, we really don't know what our future holds, so I'm concerned.
Yeah, we do not. However, I will tell you that, you know, if you guys know because you've been getting the weekly updates, we were running around twenty-five to forty openings per week. And so I'm not, at this point, I'm not concerned about that. We're, we're, we're keeping our reappointment timeline on schedule for that very reason of trying to make employees feel comfortable about their status next year. And we will, you know, any, you know, the schools are scheduled to get their budgets on Friday and they'll get to evaluate those. And if there is going to be any changes that need to occur, we're gonna work very specifically with those employees. And, and really, I mean, I like to say handhold, if you will, if there's any employees that are gonna be displaced due to whatever the reason, but I don't anticipate.
Right.
You know, we're always in need of teachers, so I feel very good about that.
Okay, good. One of, the other question, back to the DJJ. Are those students, like some that aren't any threat, have we sent them home for their safety or are they all still?
We don't have, that's run by, we don't have any control over that. We don't have any say on if they're there, when they leave, that's all, you know, that's run by the state. And so we just are required to, when they are there, to serve those students. So we don't have any say on when they get released or not.
Okay.
Dr. Pruitt?
Thank you.
Vaughn? Ms. Vaughn?
Uh, yeah, Dr. Pruitt, how are the high school and middle school principals going to make decisions on teaching slots and electives, et cetera, when we haven't made a definitive decision on the kind of day, seven period or block? Or we haven't made that decision? And that's crucial to have that decision with the principals to make those kinds of decisions. So my question is, how are they gonna make that decision based on the current schedules that they have or?
I, I can address that question.
Okay.
So, you know, our decision-making timeline for that is this week, which will also be ahead of when they receive their allocation. So we're finalizing that and I would expect to have that probably in the board and the the principal's hands, like I said, midweek. And then they'll receive their allocation on that, on that Friday. In addition to that, you know, we've already talked, as I told you, we sat down with every one of those high school principals. And in those conversations with every one of those principals, I told them, you're gonna need to expect regardless of the outcome or the decision, that your staffing level is not going to be the same as it is. And the reason for that is that, you know, we're already under the COVID nineteen impact and we knew that that, that was gonna certainly have an impact on our, you know, basically on, on our revenue for next year. But in addition to that, it was using that dollar amount, which is ten million dollars, to do the fully funding of that schedule and looking at what the data demonstrated based on that, that we really couldn't justify spending ten million dollars and getting the results that we had. So what, regardless of the decision, the staffing level was going to have to change, you know, either way. So again, that, that gives you the timeline, they will have that prior to those allocations.
But when will we have that at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's it. Okay.
Any other, any other questions for me?
We can always get the hook and pull you back if we need to.
Yeah, I'm only a few feet away, so I'm here.
Thank you so much. Dr. Atkins, hopefully six feet away.
So the next one is item H one, which approval of the bid or the, the ITN for two-way radio equipment and services. This will be, the question for that was, we only received one bid, what's the current situation? Seems we have time to look further into procurement. So that would be Mr. Davis with possibility of others chime in if they need to.
Welcome back, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, thank you. So, so I wanted, I wanted to give a, a quick update with regards to our BDA. We advertised out there the, the radio equipment ITN. And kudos to Mr. Ross and team for working with ISD, specifically Daryl Eldon and Ken Schwartz. We did have two responses. One was Industrial Communication, which was the vendor that was selected. The other vendor, because it was non-responsive and could not return the items needed in time, was not selected. In order to continue the emergency radio services that are required prior to the expiration of the ITN, the selection was made from, from one of the vendors that did respond. But this was Industrial Communication in this case.
I guess, Ms., go ahead. I guess, and the question was, in our current situation now, if, so one of the companies that, that would jump at the bid at this point? And I don't know if we're past that point, I just thought maybe we could look at it.
No, yeah, I, I can assure you, we've done our, our due diligence. And again, it was advertised and we did have, you know, two interested parties. One, of course, was deemed unresponsive and unable to return the required documents, given the nature of this work relative to emergency communications, radio, UHF and, and others. We cannot not have a vendor prior to the ITN actually expiring. That, that's not with a position that we would want to put the district in. I can assure you that, you know, the team, that's inclusive of Mr. Ross and, and team and ISD, did their due diligence in negotiating also with, with Industrial Communication. So, you know, at the time, given the vendors that were available and chose to respond to our advertisement, you know, we, we chose the, the best option for our district. Thank you. Any other questions?
Is that it? Is that for Mr. Davis? Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis, and to President Atkins, moving on?
The remainder of the questions are actually questions that came in that were really not but they came in with, I think, questions that came in as a result of the agenda, I, I would assume. So some of that, I think we can go through these with you since we're all on the line and we have staff available, if that's okay with the chair.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. So the, the first question was, please provide me, and this is a board member request, with all invoices and or contract agreements for any, for all purchases between March thirteenth through the present. So that would take some time to put together, you know, and they have not received all those invoices yet. So, you know, I'll again, look at a time estimate. And then if that's something that we can do under the protocols, we can certainly do that and share that with the board members. If not, then I'll come back and make that request or have the board member make that request, I think is what our protocols say.
Yeah, I think Mrs. J. Venelli has her hand up and then maybe she has a response to that particular.
Okay.
Okay, Mrs. J. Venelli. You're muted, unmute yourself.
Yeah, I think that the ratification really answered my question that I had. So I think that was, that was really my main focus. So I think I'm okay, unless you're telling me there's a whole lot. I, I was mainly pertaining to anything major that needed you to utilize the 1.18 policy. So that's where I was coming from.
Right, the one that, that really would be the policy would be the one relative to the hotspots. The rest of it, we've got on regular board agendas. Or it falls under the board-approved amount. The second question would be, I hear some employees who are receiving Azure's pay while others are, are work are not receiving, please advise who's receiving and who is not working yet, not receiving. So this was, this actually, Mrs. J. Venelli, gives me an opportunity to finish the things I was gonna go over with you in the one-on-one. But, but I think it's also good to do this on the line anyway with everybody.
Thank you.
For the first part of, of this response, when we start food delivery, the only employees that, only employees that were directly involved from food service that were, again, school-based employees, were the ones that were out, actually out there handing out the food or distributing the food. So because we are under an emergency situation, that triggers Article 10.04 in the, the Spalk Agreement, which is non-standard rate of pay. So what that is, during a hurricane or other declared emergency, the employee, we call a group of employees back. That is a part of a group that we, where we're not calling them all back, then we would pay them emergency pay. So in the, in the case of our food service workers, that was a work group where they were brought back just to, you know, just a small group that was actually in that distribution. So during that declared emergency, if employees are required to work during a declared emergency, they'll receive a bonus for the value of their hourly rate times the hours worked during a regular day. So that's, that's what was occurring. Now, we are in a situation this week where we have the, we have all food service workers that are working, but majority of them are actually working remotely from home, doing professional development. So what I was contacting board members about is about requesting that we, we work forward and secure a memorandum of understanding with Spalk so that we can continue to pay just those workers that are doing those, that, that interaction with the public in that food distribution. Because that, that is, that is what I would say is going above and beyond not only their job description, but really what other employee groups are doing. Many of us are working remotely or working in locations where you have very little interaction with the public. These are individuals that are literally on the front lines of this with our community and are at much higher risk and, and among some of the lowest-paid employees within our group. So I was contacting, you know, board members today to get, you know, really to seek an okay that, you know, moving forward and working with our Support Personnel Association of Lee County to put forward a memorandum of understanding so we could pay them what I really believe that they deserve. So that's why I was getting in touch with you today, if that answers that question.
Great, thank you. And?
Other questions with that, we'll move on to the next one. This one, I think, it's back to the health safety measures that we're taking with employees. I know that we, we did have, you know, some concern about the governor's executive order and so forth. I don't know if there was any additional questions. And I can read the whole thing, but Beth with, is here as well. Okay.
Ms. Venelli, I can't hear you.
I, I'm okay. I think that she answered that earlier, so I think.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Then also, that's why I wanted to talk to you about the tiered support or, you know, the tiered staffing level that we'll be implementing this week to where we're really moving even more staff to working remotely. So many of our buildings you will see will no longer be open. Entire hundred percent will be working remotely. And then in those buildings that are, it's only for the purpose of the food distribution or if you have a major project going on and you have a, a small number of people that have to get in that building. Some of our essential services like maintenance, we will have those staff members working, but only if we, if we feel that they're providing essential work to this operation, the school district. So again, the whole point here is to get as many people working from home as we possibly can. So again, the whole point here is to get as many people working from home as we possibly can so that we can keep our employees safe. The next one, I think Dr. Decimours can help us with this one. If that, I want to make sure that answered the question, if there's anything, okay. Next one has to relate to our feeding children initiative or our distribution of food. And it was related to Don't See Any Bus Delivery in Cape Coral and the West Zone. So I will allow or have a request Dr. Decimours to come up and address that question. We do have some, I know that she's proposing for some West Zone sites. Like I want to say, but I believe Mariner High School is an example, but I'll let her answer that. She's got the details.
Now, yes, good afternoon, board members. So thank you, yes. As I understand the question I was asking about, you know, basically the expansion of the feeding program in various areas and what that's looking like. So as we analyze what's going on each week and where the demand is each week, we continue to expand sites. So it is true that starting today, Mariner High in the West opened as a feeding site. And then next week, we also have a few other sites opening in the West Zone. Gulf Middle is one. J. Colen would be another one. And we'll get you, we'll get you the list. We're opening seven additional sites next week. It's been determined based on the, the demand and what we can ascertain as the need. So we will send you the list of all seven of those sites, but remember those two specifically in the West that are being open. We also have three additional bus routes that are being expanded or being open for next week as well. One in the Benita area, one in the Sun Coast area, which is the West Zone, and then the other in the East area, Lehigh. So as we determine the different, yes, yes, so as we determine the different needs and the demand that we have, we continue to expand out each week, which all these conversations relate to each other because it is critical that we have the pay and pace that, in place that Dr. Atkins was just referring to. So we have the employees that are willing and able to participate in terms of expanding this feeding program and providing our students in the community a very needed and very valuable service.
Great, thank you. Okay, Ms. Vaughn, then, Ms. Javonelli. This morning, when Dr. Atkins called, he mentioned that you're looking at possibly doing what some other school districts are doing as you add these sites, which is, I think, a great thing to perhaps look at, not an everyday, you know, like a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and when, when you do that, actually have four days worth, you know, go every other day and, and have four days worth, two breakfasts, two lunches in, in the bag. How closely are we actually looking at, at doing that? Is that something maybe within the next couple of weeks we could, we could do?
Yes, so we have our food service staff, you know, consistently analyzing what could be the best and most efficient way to do things. So right now, we have been very focused on just determining where the best places are to have our sites, to be able to feed the most children and, and reach where all of our areas of need are. So we continue to do that. And then as we analyze how our supply will come in, right? Because when that food supply gets here and, you know, the, the timing of all of that is very important determining the when as far as the distribution, as you are asking. So we do continue to look at all of those things. And as we determine that a change may need or is best to take place, then we'll continue to communicate with you all and the superintendent related to recommendations around that.
Great, thanks.
Dr. Decimours, one thing that you might want to mention, I believe that we do have a plan to cover the day that we are not going to be distributing food with distributing extra meals that particular day. Could you let?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Thank you for mentioning that. So there are two days coming up here, Friday, of course, which is Good Friday, and Monday, which is, you know, the Monday after Easter that many of our employees, including our food service workers, would have been off work. And so the plan that we have, and, and children would have been out of school, you know, on those days as well. So the plan that we have for that is on Thursday, we will be distributing three days' worth of meals on that day, which would cover Thursday, Friday, and Monday. So we will not be working on, food service workers will not be working physically on either one of those days. However, meals would have been distributed to cover all three of those days to our families who avail themselves of the opportunity on Thursday.
And Ms. Jordan, and then Ms. Kittens.
Well, first, I'd like to thank you all for doing that. I've been going around to the different sites and seeing. And when you're saying that they'll be receiving three days' worth of food, in those bags, I know they have two separate bags, one is their juice and two milks. And because I actually looked to see what was in there, a cheese stick and usually something hot. Like today, I know they were serving corn dogs. But, so I don't know how they would have a hot meal or something of that nature for the three days when they're doing. It's usually supposed to be, I think, their lunch. So their breakfast is their granola, cheese, milk, and a juice. Sorry, milk. And then the other goat is the hot, another snack, carrots, everybody gets carrots, and something hot. So how do they plan on doing that for three days and maintaining that type of food?
Yeah, so, so I don't have the specifics on each of the menus for each of those days. We certainly can get them to you if you want to. Our resident food service is food service extraordinary Lauren Koushwan, her staff, those diets or the meal plans together. So we certainly can get you the menus for each day. But the thought process, I believe, behind that would be to have more prepackaged type meal that would be available for that, those further out days, like for the Monday. It would be one of those, you know, a type of food that would carry well. So it wouldn't necessarily be a hot food, that hot food might be served for the Thursday. And then for Friday, more of like a prepackaged type meal that would be able to kind of hold for Friday and Monday. That is the, the thought process behind how we'll do three days. But we certainly can get you the information on the menus for each one of those days if you're interested in seeing those.
No, this isn't necessary. I just, I just had that question. And, and I will also say that at all the different schools that I have gone to and different sites that I've gone to, the food service people that are there are just so kind. And they, they have the kids, you know, look at, hey, next tomorrow we're going to have Hat Day or bring your teddy bear. They, they greet you with a smile and that's a little bit of cheer. I really, really appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for saying that. I really can't say enough. I appreciate those kudos about how hard our food service staff have been working, as the superintendent said. They really are on the front lines there, dealing with many public, up to more than 10,000 meals a day now. Really sacrificing a lot of themselves in order to offer what is this tremendous, very much needed service in our community and what will continue to be as this situation gets, goes longer. It will continue to be more needed. So as, you know, some situations get more desperate, we are going to be asking more of our food service employees in terms of, you know, being out there on the front lines to be able to offer this service to the, the additional people that will need it as our situation goes along. So we've been trying to think of different ways to recognize them for that, and I appreciate you saying that.
Well, and I just have one last thing. I really appreciate the fact too that we did add that Sun Coast and J. Colen English getting that North Fort Myers, because as I had sent in a request for that as well, there is a great need there. So thank you so much, because I know a lot of those people cannot get out.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Yes, we, we are working hard with our food service staff in conjunction with our operations staff, those in transportation, to identify those sites and those areas which it is most needed and continuing to expand our footprint. So again, seven sites and three routes being added next week. And very soon, as soon as all of those routes are finalized, we know our schools, forgive me for not having the list right in front of me. I had it before I left my office and then left it sitting right there on the table and walked down here. So we'll get you the information on those, all seven of those. Plus, when the three bus routes are finalized, you will have that as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And then Mrs. Javonelli, next. Ms. Kittens.
No, thank you very much. I'm so glad to see that the West Zone has got, has more routes and that's all picked up. So that's great. I think the momentum is going to increase, like you said. So, and I, and I agree that I, I saw how the, they're very, they're very compassionate when they're giving this food out to these people. And so that's actually wonderful. So keep up, thank you, just spread the word that thank you, that they're working hard and it's obvious. And I will, I expect it to increase, like you said, Dr. Decimours. I still would like to see like a mass text go out where people can opt in and are aware of what's going on. Because I, I still think we don't, we're not reaching everybody and they're not aware of the food. And, and thank you for mentioning the fact, the three-day, the, the long weekend technically in this, I think that that might be something that Ms. Vaughn mentioned, that we'll see how well that works, because we're going to be experimenting that on Thursday with giving a supply of three days and how that, how that works out for everybody. So thank you.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you for that. We'll, we'll work with communications as we have been doing to help facilitate the communication of that. You all see the information that's on our website. We hit very hard on social media. Academic Services helps us in that every, the, the message is pushed out to every Google Classroom, on every Chromebook that's out there. So we're trying very hard to get the message out. But I will check with our communications area related to text messaging as well. But we, we do think that, you know, hitting up the Chromebooks is a, is a very good way to get that message out, because every student that's got that Chromebook in their hands out there, which are most of them at this point, they're getting that information on their Chromebook as well.
Speaking of which, how many are actually using, what's the percentage of the use of the Chromebooks right now? Or it was like 87%. Have we increased that at all? Does anybody know? Update on that?
Hold on, let me bring Dr. Spiro on down. I'm going to maintain our social distancing and he's stepping right on in, okay?
Thank you.
I'm a little taller than everyone else, so that made it a little bit more challenging. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon, how are you?
I'm excellent. So I am through with you, our latest numbers that we have around student contact and teacher contact. And we define that as a percentage of students that have been in contact with their teachers, meaning by phone, by email, or by distance learning. So this morning, our numbers are, we have 97% of our students have been in contact with their teachers over the last six days. So we really, we're really proud of our teachers for being really dogmatic about getting in touch with their students and reaching out to our community. So I just wanted to say thank you to our teachers.
Wow, that's incredible. Great. And Ms. Patrica.
97.2%, is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Completely unbelievable. The work that you've done is, I can't thank you enough. As you know, I'm seeing this as a parent, as well as a board member, and it's been seamless in my house. I can tell you that I have received, I told the superintendent that it was borderline harassment in terms of the contacts I had gotten, because I do have four children with four different sets of teachers, all of whom have communicated via text message and via Google Classroom about the availability of grab-and-go meals. And I'm also aware that schools are doing unique things in their communities to reach out to students in need, to include getting in the back of a pickup truck and making announcements in different languages about the availability of grab-and-go meals and Chromebooks and making sure communities are engaged. I understand we have some principals who are handing out flyers in churches and other community organizations for those who might not necessarily be receiving text messages or responding to those text messages. I don't know that there is another communication medium available to our staff that hasn't already been utilized. You guys have certainly thought of things that I could never have thought of. So I don't want to gush too much, but I just, I just think that every single person working at this district right now is a complete rock star. And it obviously starts with Dr. Atkins. But what I'm hearing from teachers and about teachers and the attitude, Dr. Spiro, I've said to you several times since you came on board in this position that your, your charge, so to speak, or, or your desire is to be there to provide what teachers need and what schools need. And I don't think I've seen that play out better than I've seen over the past two weeks. So just thank you and thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much. And, you know, it is a, these guys are clapping here with, thank you. It really is a team effort. I mean, it does start with Dr. Atkins, but goes all the way down to the classrooms as well as our paras and our office staff and our school leader. So clearly, it's been a community effort and so kudos to our community.
I, I do have to say that teachers have suffered, I think, for several years now from a perception that's not positive. And I don't know where we would be right now without teachers. And so I'm hopeful that the public will get behind our teachers and understand the valuable role that they play in our society. Because just with four kids at home, I would be going absolutely bananas if they weren't. Well, they're probably off their Chromebooks now, but if they weren't on their Chromebooks, at least some portion of each day, my mental health would be at issue. So thank you, teachers. Thank you for what you're doing. That's it. I'll stop.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrica. That was important from the parent point of view. Mrs. Kittens.
The one question I had about, and I don't know who can answer this, maybe the superintendent, about the grab-and-go is where are we with our partnership with Harry Chapin? I know there are some schools that on the regular without the COVID situation have a weekly or bi-weekly visit with, from Harry Chapin and they hand out foods. So are we coordinating that with them still? And perhaps that's a good way for the, you know, that three-day lapse to kind of fill that in as well.
Yes, we still have our partnership with Harry Chapin. I'm not sure what the, the plans are for Harry Chapin within the three-day lapse that you're referring to. So I can certainly get some information on that and find that out. However, we still have our partnership with Harry Chapin. The latest one, I, I believe with Franklin Park, that they will be, Harry Chapin, we have a feeding site, our feeding site at Franklin Park, and then Harry Chapin will also be set up there. I believe starting today, if I'm not mistaken, in order to feed adults that come through as well. Because as you know, our feeding program is only geared toward children 18 and under. So our, our partnership with Harry Chapin continues mostly in that capacity right now.
Excellent. Okay, any other questions or comments regarding Mrs. Javonelli?
This was actually back, I had a question back with Dr. Spiro. Does that 3% include special needs in the Buckingham? Is that the 3% that we're not really reaching? And, you know, this, our special needs and our Buckingham students? And then, I had another question, but that's, and I guess ask that into that one.
The 97.2% encompasses all of our schools. So that includes Buckingham, exceptional student center, Royal Palm, our programs, as well as our traditional schools as well. So that's, that's everybody together.
And then like, are guidance counselors, are they reaching out? Like, is that part of their, like, part of their, their plan since they're, you know, they don't have the student contact, but they still can, there's lots they can be doing right now with students. So, and especially those that probably maybe aren't quite so diligent on getting on the computer and so forth. So what's going on with them?
Yeah, I'm really glad to ask that question. So the first task for school counselors, especially in high school first, was to make contact with each and every senior. And they sent them a personal email after they spoke with them about exactly what they need to graduate. And so we want to make sure that we take advantage of this opportunity where the state assessments have been lifted. So students that need to either bolster their GPA or make up poorer credit, we really want to make sure that our students are taking advantage of that. So that was really the work that those school counselors were doing in high school. Outside of that, in middle school and then also in elementary school, our school counselors have been there to help with our students. Our students can access school counselors at any time and that's school couns- Our students can access school counselors at any time and that school counselor will reach out to them. And so this is a trying time and some of our students have a lot of different questions about what's going on and some uncertainty in their life, including, we need food in our house. That's one of our help tickets that we have for students. It might be that we need food and then the school counselor reaches out to that family and make sure that they have what they need. So our school counselors have been extremely busy.
I'm sorry, you may have said this, Dr. Spiro, and I zoned out for a second. What about charter school participation? Do we have any idea what that is?
I do not have the charter school participation in front of me, but I can get that for you and make sure that's sent in our daily update.
Awesome. Ms. Kittens?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. And a lot of parents are thanking you guys right now and they are doing this to you as well. Okay, you mentioned that 97.2% has been reached. And can you talk about that in comparison to how many buy Chromebook as opposed to hard copy as in conjunction with the hotspots that we still have to purchase and that kind of big picture? Does that make sense? You're off.
There you go. Sorry about that. So we have over 62,000 Chromebooks in students' hands. And remember, some of those students share those as well. As far as the packets are concerned, we don't have an exact number of the distributing, but we are getting ready to distribute our second set of 15-day packets that'll be available at the grab and go sites as well. Those will go out next week. And we're going to try to keep a closer tab on that number so we can really get a firmer handle on how many packets have gone out there. It might be a piece of data that we collect when we ask our teachers to look at their attendance. It might be, how many of them are you doing Chromebook? How many of them are you doing packet? And that might give us a, a little bit of a more accurate picture.
Awesome. Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
I just wanted to give thanks as well, as Chris was saying, or Ms. Patrica was saying. I have multiple grandchildren in multiple different schools. So I've had the opportunity to see all of them work on their Chromebooks as well as the extra work from the art teacher, the PE teachers there, having them do exercise. We have, the counselors are there to speak. And even, I have one who does have that, the extra special needs. And he definitely gets all that he is needing. So I really, really appreciate all that.
Very important. Thank you, Dr. Spiro. Okay, any other questions, comments, anything?
Ms. Patrica, I, I will tell you that I have added home economics to my children's daily schedule, which mostly is usually cleaning. But today, my daughter decided to make a coffee cake while this meeting has been going on and the aroma wafting throughout my house is really, really distracting.
I wish you could share that with us.
Just so you know.
Awesome, yeah. I, I know my grandkids have been having a lot of multiple fun experiences with their teachers. And I, I think I shared with Dr. Spiro, but my one grandson who wanted to do virtual school anyway is in his glory and he's out there doing his calculus, et cetera, ramp building and measuring and his geometry. So he, he's found a whole new life and, and is enjoying it tremendously. But it's been amazing how many of the parents are so much more involved with their own children. And so, you know, out of everything bad rises some good. So I think, I, I see that as a shot in the arm for families and, and let me know how the coffee cake is. Any other?
Let's see. Other question that came, it says from the findings of the out-of-cycle audit. Please clarify, why was there an out-of-cycle audit? Going audit now? You only mentioned to me in our 101 finding two, internal auditor, request for a workshop to discuss all findings. Number three, employee practices and personnel records. Who, please advise who holds this position presently? So let me just try to go through that one and then for Desmore can help me as we go. But first of all, remember the, the preliminary tentative findings was related to the out-of-cycle audit, it was operations audit. So we had the operations audit, that's the one that, that, you know, we went to J-LAC to, to address. And then we had the out-of-cycle that came after that. So that's this audit right here. And then we just, again, received those preliminary and tentative findings and will be communicating back and forth with the state auditor in the meantime. So that's, that's that particular audit. And then I don't know, Dr. Desmore, if you want to add anything to that before I go into some of these specifics on the findings?
No, sorry, no, nothing to add to that, no.
All right, so the second that had to do with, let's see, we discussed finding two already with the internal auditor. Finding three is employee practices and personnel records. And question is, please advise who holds this position presently? Is it that the same employee that was transferred in June 2018? Question about board policy and the position being advertised? Is it an HR issue? And just a lot of questions and concerns about that one. So the current status of that one is that that particular position, we do not have anybody in that particular position. I know that Dr. Savage, because we've had some transition, obviously, in the chief position, so that's part of, you know, the, the issue, what's at issue here. So Dr. Savage is, once we get through this COVID situation, he had already come to me related to the executive director of transportation position and how that can be used, as well as this director of transportation position and, and the former position, which was over fleet management. So, so there's no one in that position right now. I don't, and we do not anticipate anyone in that position in the future because right now, we're trying to get to the other side of this COVID-19. And then I'll work with Dr. Savage to evaluate the executive director position that is also currently opening, open in operation. Related to board policy, I think many of you remember as we went through that, that involved one of the employees that's formerly with the district. And there was a lot of discussion with board members related to that particular position in 101 meetings in terms of where that individual was going. We felt that we had advertised it. The auditor disagreed with that. And, and that's, that was, I think that was communicated in that response. So we can certainly discuss that further if necessary. And then, Dr. Desmore, is there anything else you'd like to add to that? Or if there's any additional questions that I can answer now? You know, one of the things that's important is that we are waiting for the auditor, you know, us to be able to respond to the auditor and then for the final report to be provided to the district. So there is still that step in the process and perhaps, and this is up to the board, but perhaps once we get that final report, if you wanted to have a workshop at that point, that would probably be more appropriate, in my opinion. We've not had one in the middle of receiving the preliminary tentative and then coming back and, and having a workshop and then having the final later. But again, that's up, up to the board.
Right, the only thing that I would add to that is there were a couple of questions about clarifying why, why there wasn't out-of-cycle audit and if there's an ongoing audit now. So in the various updates to the board, we did talk about the, the out-of-cycle audit that we were undergoing. That was, I mean, strictly at the pleasure of the auditor general's office. So the auditor general scheduled the out-of-cycle audit. We do also, we will also have in fiscal year 20, financial audit conducted by the auditor general's office as well. Under normal circumstances, we would have expected that audit to have started by now. It has not. And we haven't received necessarily any word on when they will be coming, but, or when they will be conducting the audit, however they conduct it, whether here on site or in some alternate method. So we will definitely keep you aware of how that's proceeding and what we hear related to that.
Just one thing as it relates to out-of-cycle, if they're part of the districts that have experienced this, I know Dade had an out-of-cycle audit related to operations as well. Very kind of similar number of findings, I believe, if you look at our, our situation, their situation, and then how their out-of-cycle audit turned out. You know, so that's, it, it does happen. We don't like to have out-of-cycle audits for, for, you know, I think reasons we all understand. But, you know, I will say this, this out-of-cycle audit, you know, it was really, it was good working with the team. I think, you know, we ended up having a really good working relationship overall. And, you know, so it, it ended up being, I don't remember if I call it a positive experience, but it was, it was good. I mean, you know, they, they gave us some good feedback. There are some things that you have a little bit of a, you know, Department of Education has their role in this and the auditor has their, a different role in this. So it's trying to bring all of that together. Like, for example, the, the audit finding on the Ad Valorem. As you know, we're still working with Department of Education on that one. But then the auditor comes up as an audit finding again in this particular audit. So that's where there's kind of a lapse between when you get a final determination from DOE and then you have an audit finding in the meantime. But, you know, like I said, we'll work through that. And at the end of the day, I think it will, on a, like an item like Ad Valorem, it will provide better clarification moving forward for the district.
Yes, and I, and I think importantly, it's important to note that we reduced, you know, significantly the number of findings that we had from the last operation audit to this one as well.
Thank you for that. Okay, board members, any other questions or comments? Mrs. Giovinelli? I'm mute. Okay.
Yeah. So who was in that position? Because that's what I didn't understand. That was one of my questions was who was, who was the person in that position? And then how was it advertised? Dr. Atkins, you said it was advertised.
So Bill Law was in that position. So what happened is you had the position for the director of transportation that was advertised and he applied for that position. And, and, and so did Mr. Lloyd. I mean, Mr. Lloyd was hired for that position, but the, the executive staff at that point felt that they had the qualified candidates out of that first original interview process. And therefore, I think it was a month later, after the job description was approved, Mr. Law was hired into the director of fleet management. And I think that the, you know, the, the auditor felt that because the advertising was done as a director of transportation and not under the new job description as a director of fleet management, that, that that was considered a finding. And that's why, the reason why it was, it was put on that, that, that tentative, preliminary tentative report.
Okay. Anything else, board members? Okay, then. Is there anything else on your list, Dr. Atkins, that I don't see here?
I just, I, I had indicated, I thought I had covered everything that I needed to with Ms. Giovinelli, but I did have one item I wanted to discuss with her offline. She's the last board member that I need to get in touch with. And just real quick, if I've got the time.
Yes.
I'll, I'll be in touch with her right after this, if that's okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Quick, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just had one question with regard, it's, it's going back to the school board attorney agreement. I just wanted, because I know there was a, a good deal of discussion on the local civic organization. And I just wanted, and we didn't discuss that, I wanted to make sure whether there was a consensus on that. It's currently in there for one local civic organization. And so I wanted to make sure that there was a consensus on that, so I don't bring it back and there'd be a surprise that, that is currently in there. So I just wanted to make sure that I had clear direction on that.
Okay, then let's go for consensus. Ms. Patrica? Ms. Vaughn? Thumbs up or down?
Oh.
Okay, Ms. Jordan? Okay, Ms. Kittens? Ms. Giovinelli? Okay, Ms. Morgan? Okay, and I'm okay with one organization. Okay.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Mr. Quick?
I was going to say, thank you and sorry for not bringing that up before. I, I just wanted to make sure I had clear guidance.
Okay, thank you. Anything for the good of the order? No, okay. Then seeing no other business, I think this workshop is concluded and thank you to everyone who participated. And stay well and healthy and keep your families together. God bless. Thank you.
Take care.